Here.
Mayor Gore. Councillor Joyner.
Here.
Councillor Harris.
Here.
Councillor Denton.
Here.
Councillor Pelham.
Here.
Councillor Holloway.
Here.
Okay, we're going to move into our public hearing. Dr. Manker, I'll turn it over to you real briefly before we open up the public hearing.
Tonight's public hearing is for the proposed tax rates for the year of 2023. Council is to set the machinery and tools, personal tangible property, mills and lodging tax rate for the year 2023, beginning January 1 to December 31, 2023. The public hearing is designed to allow citizens to have any comments or inputs regarding the tax budget. In this proposed budget, I am requesting all machinery and tools taxes to remain the same. Same, real estate is at 113, personal property at 350, machinery and tools at 310, mills at 6% and lodging at 8%. I yield the floor to the mayor.
Okay. All right. At this time, is there any questions for Dr. Manker before we open up the public hearing? Seeing no lights. Public hearing is now open. I don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the public hearing? All right, seeing that nobody signed up or wants to speak, go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, at this time, do I have a motion to approve the tax rate resolution?
So, my second.
Okay, motion's been made by Councillor Denton, seconded by Councillor Joyner.
On the board, should the motion be read into the minutes? The actual motion, because dealing with taxes and money.
It doesn't have to be.
I can do something.
It doesn't have to be, it serves just like any other motion.
People that's looking at the public don't have agenda, so I mean, we should act like they don't and say what we're doing.
Yes ma'am, I don't think it hurts anything for it to be publicly read out. But you all are fine how it is, but for the public's sake, it can be read out, yes.
I can, I can read the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Staff is requesting approve, approve the recommended tax resolution for machinery and tools at $3.10% per 100 assessed value, mills at 6%, business property at $3.50, machinery and tools at $3.10 and personal property at $3.50.
Okay.
Did you say lodging as well?
Lodging as well.
Okay. Seeing no other lights, roll call please.
Councillor Joyner.
Yes.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Councillor, I'm sorry, Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore. Councillor Denton.
Yes.
Councillor Pelham.
Yeah.
Councillor Holloway. Motion passes, six is one.
Okay. Moving on to our work session, Dr. Manker.
Tonight's work session is to review outstanding items. We consider those as council requests that I'm bringing back to you guys. There are four items that I would like to discuss tonight. One being the council budget, which is outstanding, the outside agencies, required positions, and our funding for accounting remediation services and our PMO services. And then take a look at the remaining list of funding opportunities that council may wish to, to fund. So, to begin the work session tonight, we can start with the council budget. The council, council budget was provided to you guys. Since our last discussion, Councillor Holloway pointed out that there was a consensus on the DAS to provide each councillor $10,500 for traveling per councillor. Since then, several of you have reached out to me indicating that they would not have any interest in traveling for various different reasons. And so, I tried to relay that in the council budget, everybody was agreeable to allowing whoever wanted to travel, the opportunity to travel and have those educated, education purposes. But as you see in your budget now, there has been 10,000, a total of $30,000 allotted for traveling for the councillors who wish to travel. And I'm open the floor for any questions regarding the travel budget. The ward grant remains at 3,000 for each individual and, and the traveling for those who would like to travel. So, for any discussion, any changes or any discussion, I'm open to have that discussion today.
Okay, hold on, just a reminder, everybody, just keep your lights on if you want to speak, and I'll nod to you when I see your lights, that way you don't have to hold on to them forever. So, the first person that I had was Councillor Holloway, Denton, and then Pelham.
I'm, as I've expressed all this week, I'm not in agreement with it. We came to a consensus the last time, the, I believe the travel, travel budget was about 7,200 and then adding the meals, phone, lodging, conference fees, dues, memberships and all of that stuff, which would also be included in lodging. That number would be 10,500 total. Then we had 3,000 for the ward budget, and we had a consensus on giving, putting the funds where they are now, but this amount is not even half of the amount that we discussed. Councillors, Councillor Denton and Mayor Parton had requested that they were okay with it, however, they would like to see more money in ward funds instead. So then it was my thoughts to come to a compromise with the number. This number, I believe, is extremely low. I think that it would be fair to add and enough travel if they want, if we come into a compromise to remove some of the funds from traveling to give to the ward funds, so instead of the ward funds being 3,000, we can make the ward funds 5,000 and bring travel down to a five. But to have $30,000 as a total amount accessible to all councillors for travel, it, it, it just doesn't make sense. So, that, that's where I am on the budget matter.
Okay, Councillor Denton.
I, I think we've heard all the arguments for and against. I've said, said it before, I'm still saying it. I don't know, and I don't, I don't know what this audit that we just did, how much this is going to end up costing the city. I'm not an accountant, but I can add numbers. And we've got a lot of needs in the city, and we've got to get down and get some work done to get these audits done. And I think we've talked about 600,000 for leftover money, and that could go for the PMO. We heard last week, we've got a million point four shortfall with schools that we've got to find, if that's the worst scenario. To me, it's not just this initial work that's going to cost, but the things that they find that need to be corrected, that's going to be money, and it's going to be in the millions. And also, yes, we got an influx this year on the real estate taxes because of the assessments. We've got a little buffer which helped us with this budget. But, and that'll be good for next year. Assessments are good for two years. Third year, you're going to see that correct itself. Assessments will, I will put my reputation as a realtor on the line and tell you they will be adjusted. It's not going to be there. So if we commit ourselves to a lot of money, I don't know where we're going to get it in year three. I'm not going to be here, so I don't know. I am worried about how these numbers add up. And truly, this $10,500 for three councillors is a drop in the bucket compared to everything else. But, that would help pay a salary, it would help fix something in our city that needs to be fixed. And right now, I think we all need to give our city 100% of our time and energy and help where we can. So, as much as I like to give to, to my ward, and I have done that. And, but if we don't have it right now, I think our cities needs to get off our financial health and straight. We have got to get it straight, and we need to do it now. One of the fixes we already know, and that's the third-party billing for the sewer bill, that's going to cost the city a million dollars, right there. And that's just one fix. So, my figures just don't add up to where we can take trips this year. Not that I wouldn't like to, I would love to go to VML. I don't know where they're having their convention, but I do like to go to that. But I just don't feel that I can do that. Not when I'm getting calls every day, "How are you going to fix the city?" And if they see us spending money on ourselves, that's just going to add more fuel to the fire. I think we just need to put Hopewell first right now and not ourselves. We know what we've got to do. We don't need any, to go to a convention to tell us. We know what we've got to do. So, I'm against, I, I just feel like for this year, till we know what we're facing, I would like to see the ward improvement, that is $21,000. And the two, the three, 10,500s, I would see us, I would like to see us take that out of our budget for this year, until we have a handle on what it's going to cost. And that would pay 30, 31, that would pay a salary for a year, for one person. I think the citizens would be very pleased to know that we as a council are looking at the city's needs rather than ours right now. That's just how I feel. And I do appreciate you letting me talk, thank you.
All right, so I have Councillor Pelham, Vice Mayor Gore, and then Councillor Holloway.
Well, there's people that's always been on council who don't believe in formally education for councillors or any type of travel, and it's, it's okay, but I agree with Councillor Holloway that whatever we do, I think it should be consistent across the board. If my ward is going to get 10,500, I think everyone's ward should get the same amount. If you choose not to use that money, then that's your choice. If you don't feel like you want to go to a training or a conference to gain information and education, that'd be your choice, and then that money would return to the city. But I think we should be consistent in giving all the wards the same amount of money across the spectrum. And so, what do you call it, educational points, whatever. I, I think training is important for all councillors. We haven't been in, I guess, three to five years, again, it's been a while. And with the new councillors on as well, if anyone should go, they should be allowed to go at least to, to, and gain that experience of collaborating with people that, cities and towns and that have the same type of citizenship. You just learn, you just, you get to know a lot, and, and it's a lot of, it's quite a bit of educational classes that you can, you cannot gain from. So I, I'm in tune again to keeping the amounts consistent across the ward, so it won't be unbiased. Everyone get the same, and we go from there. Thank you.
Okay.
We, we not talking about outside agencies yet, right?
About a what?
We not talk, this is not the time for outside agency comments, okay.
All right, Vice Mayor Gore.
So, I just, this is always in a fight with councils, council members as, as of late. Sorry, like 2019 becoming an issue, but I'll just say that $30,000 is enough to pay a full-time salary for someone for a year, let alone the fringe benefits. So, can I get a position out of $31,000? So that's one point to make in regards to this. The other thing I would say is, I'm not sure why it started being a negative connotation to want to educate yourself for your job and what you do, especially responsible for the quality of life of thousands of people per ward. So with that being said, I get if people don't want to attend trainings, and that's their prerogative. But I do hope that we start using proper terminology when describing this. It's not trips. It's not, you know, made to seem as if we're going on vacation. It is training, professional development. So that's first and foremost. The other thing I would say is, in order to fix the city, we do have to put our professional understanding first, to, to gain knowledge. Unless you are a seasoned councillor, no disrespect to new councillors, you have a lot of learning to do. And if you look at past councils and past precedents, that is not a good measure for you to learn how to be a councillor, to be honest. So you need to go and get training and, and speak to others to have a full, very clear understanding of what this role means, and then also how it's done in other places to figure out what is best here. I'm not saying copy those things, but what I am saying is, once you leave these 11 square miles, you get to see that how this place runs is not like any other place. In fact, we're oftentimes the opposite. So, once you have that exposure, you realize that there's so much more work that needs to be done in this community that you can be in charge of. With that being said, there has not been a lot of progress these last four years, and I do think part of that is due to the lack of training, access to resources, partnerships that you can bring back to the city. I think that it's limiting when you don't have that opportunity to do so. But also, again, just because people don't want to go, it's okay. I, I just don't think it's fair or right to make it be a negative for others who want to do well and they're, to get this training for themselves and their constituents. So the last thing I would say is, my personal preference is to have it be equal. And if you use it, you use it. If you don't, you don't, that's fine. But it goes back to, again, the Congress, the argument that was four years ago. If you don't use your money, you shouldn't be able to use it for something else because it starts, it starts a political argument. "I did this for my people, you went on vacation." And that is how it's been used, and people don't use their money. And it paints a negative, it paints an adversarial picture when that's not, there's no need for that. And the other part I would say is, if there's a majority that does not want to support, just earmarking the money for everyone equally, then fine, I can respect that too. But I will say that, one, people, I would like there to be a pledge to not make it be a negative thing once people go on travel, to run to a newspaper to say they went on vacation because that has been done before too. To sit on a DAS and pick on people for traveling, because that has been done too. And then also, to not request mileage or any other thing related to education or travel if you're not willing to be on record to receive the funds. So, I, you know, I'm just saying, like, just think about, you don't, you don't have to go NLC, VML, whatever, but there's a banquet you want to go to, the Chamber of Commerce you pay. If you want to go to something in the region, some other places, you have to pay, Gateway Region you pay. We have to pay for those tickets. It comes out of this. So just be mindful, if you put nothing for yourself, then you have nothing to use. That's just my personal opinion, again, I just don't want it to be negative, because it doesn't have to be at all, and that's my two cents, so that's where I stand.
Okay, Councillor Holloway, and then Councillor Joyner.
I, I, I would like to ditto a lot of what Vice Mayor said to, tonight. People play these political games, and it's, it's honestly sad. If this was something, to, to, number one, we just voted last week on moving funds and already have gained the answer to how we would utilize and bring to good the things that A and M and the state has come in and suggested. So we've already set funds aside and reallocated, relocated, rather, those funds for that purpose. So, to sit here and say, hey, you know, we haven't made an agreement on what to use them, what we're, how, what we're going to do exactly, but we have funds for that. Then, definitely ditto what Mayor, Vice Mayor Gore said when it comes to, this is not for a personal trip, these are not for vacations. We ain't going to Las Vegas to stay in a four-star, five-star hotel, take a first-class plane trip, a plane ticket and, and stuff like that, to go where we need to go. This is also not just a personal thought of those who are on the council who have spoken to it tonight, again. I'm on Virginia Gateway Region and the Crater Business Commission, and these guys said to me, soon as I got there, y'all have been away from the table for a while. Y'all have missed out on so many opportunities. I had a meeting with Congresswoman McClellan, and while we were, and the city manager was also there, and she was reading off of lists of support funds that were going to all of these localities by millions of dollars. And every locality was around, that's around, was on that list except for Hopewell. So we missed millions of dollars because we had not been involved in these things. And both McClellan, as well as the Chair for the Boards, when they pulled me aside, this is exactly what they were speaking about. And I even mentioned to them, I said, "We have councillors that are arguing right now to say we don't need a travel budget." And all of them, look, every time I mentioned it, they looked at me like, "What? Why is that even a conversation?" They even a state senator. The state senators in Virginia make about $19,000. They have a travel budget of over 300,000 a year. If they use the funds, they use them, if they don't, they don't. But what organization do you know of that doesn't allow for travel? But this isn't for a fun vacation, this is not for a personal trip, as the councillor said, it's not for a personal trip. This is for education, it's for networking, and these things allow for, you're talking about doing something for our city? I hear people complain about us not knowing what we're doing. How do we become more educated? How do we get around networks if we're not able to travel? When we go out to these conferences and different things, it allows us the opportunity to learn more about grant funding for the city of Hopewell and bring funding back as options to our city. So this is not for us to go to Florida and sit up on, on the beach under the sun. Again, I like to reiterate that, it is not like that. And these funds, if we all got the $10,500 apiece, this is not enough fun, as she said, to, to pay for anybody's salary and plus benefits here. And it also will not answer, we are, we are working on a balanced budget, has been, has, have been presented with one that we haven't voted on yet. But it's not that. I could go on further to say what I really think is about, and why it really came in in 2019, but nobody really wants to talk about that over the DAS, you know. But people complain about certain people when they get in position, for whatever reason, and all of a sudden, 2019, it became a problem of travel. And you get online, and I see it all the time, and make comments, even the, the past former councillors here. Make comments online and say, "We want to take personal trips, we want to take first-class tickets," and it's just not the truth. And you know it's not the truth. And I yield the floor.
Okay, Councillor Joyner.
Yes. I just want to say that I, I, I think that we should pursue professional development. I think it's important for all of the councillors, particularly for those of us that are new. With that in mind, given the budget constraints, given the fact that we are going through, we have just completed an audit, and we know that it's going to be expensive to make some of the fixes that we need moving forth, I do believe that we need to be measured in our response. You know, I doubt that I plan to go on any long trips, but I probably will want to attend some VML things this year. As to how it's split up, I, I, I'm not trying to, 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 to beg out of this, this exchange, but I feel like I, I have spoken to Dr. Manker and sort of said, "Look, you kind of need to do what you need to do." Now, as far as, I do understand though, the, this idea that it should be equal among everybody, I get it, I get it. But if there are some savings to be had there, I'm fine with a reduced amount for me. However, with regard to ward money, I don't think that that is negotiable. I think those dollars need to stay there if for nothing else than communicating with our constituents. Because it's really important that we use those funds, and we don't have a local paper. Facebook is not necessarily an adequate way to communicate with our citizens, but that $3,000 can go a long way to mailings, et cetera, over a year. So I, I would prefer that we not touch that. I am fine with, if, you know, with breaking it down and, and distributing the dollars out over, over seven people, however you want to do it. I'm not against travel at all. I do think professional development is very, very important. And particularly so, given, given where we are right now, the fact that we are in. As, as I, I'm going to, I'm going to say that, I was told the other day by the Secretary of, uh, of, um, Finance, that this is an unprecedented situation in the history of the city that we are in. And so, maybe we wouldn't have been in this situation if we had had some, I don't know if we had networked, if we had done more, if we had known more, I, I don't know, I don't know the, the answers to all of that. But I do think that it is important for us to maintain a network within the Commonwealth of Virginia, uh, for all the localities, so that's kinda where I'm at. Um, but, um, and I'm not for, um, I, I can't say I'm for ten five for all of the counselors, I, 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 I really am not. But if that, we can lower that number and spread it out among the, the counselors and, uh, everybody would be happy with that, I, I, I'd be happy to yield some of my money to somebody else if they needed it. So, that's where I'm at.
Okay, uh, Councilor Denton.
Um, I, I can go along with, uh, Councilor Joyner to a certain degree. The three thousand I have used and it has been good. Um, I guess one of the best things I did, brought a movie here for the high school students to see about a shooting in Charleston, South Carolina. And the young man was there whose, one of his relatives was killed. So, yes, we, this money is used in the community. But I also know the community is concerned about our situation. And I think if I went and asked them where would they rather I spend it, they would, they would tell me, right now, the city needs it. But, that's okay. Um, I will, if you're gonna keep the thirty one thousand five hundred for I would like to see that divided between seven. There's only one I really would like to go to, and this way I don't have that opportunity, there's only for three. Uh, I'm, agree with Councilor Joyner. I think networking with those that we work with every day with the state of Virginia. I've been to two of those, uh, over the years, and they were very good. Um, sometimes they're right in Richmond, we don't even have to get a hotel room, we can car together and and go over there and attend those meetings, and they are good. Um, I think things that are related to us on a day-to-day basis is good. Going to California and to the NLC and people that we really don't have anything in common with, no. Our, that does not interest me at all. But, um, I don't think it's fair that three receive that much. And I would suggest to our city manager is to divide it evenly between the seven of us. And then that way, those that can, would have a chance to go, if, and if they don't want it, okay, but I would like to have it to possibly go to NLC, to go to the B, BML. Virginia.
Okay, so, Dr. Manker, I think there is a majority to split the dollars up amongst everybody.
Not thirty thousand.
No, it was thirty thousand.
This gives, that gives everybody four thousand five hundred, and I think we're back at our original conversations of, of seven five to everybody.
So, so we were at seven five, and then the reason why we were at seven five was because seven five was travel? But then you still had mileage, phone, postage, lodging, conference, meals, dues.
Right.
That boarded up to ten five.
So, uh, the, the idea was to put everybody seven five in their own, uh, communication account to, to spend. So, it would not be listed in travel, lodging, convention and meals, it will be just in each counselor's budget line item.
That makes it even.
Manage.
That, that, that makes it worse, because the three thousand is already separated, so you're saying three thousand for the ward funds? And then it's four thousand, split to four thousand.
No, I'm saying go, I'm saying give everybody seven five and keep the three thousand in ward funds.
Seventy five hundred for, ten thousand five hundred, ten thousand five hundred.
But the consent, that
I like to wave the, can I put a motion on the floor?
It's ten five right now across three. But Ms. Denton and Councilor Joyner said that they would agree to, to splitting it out if it was reduced. So, we gotta come to a compromise.
So, the majority is saying ten five for everybody.
I don't know if it was the majority that said ten five.
I like to put a motion on the floor.
I mean, I'll go with what
I can, to waive the rules, yes you can.
I will go, hold on, hold on, I'll say, I'll go along with the idea of the compromise, I mean.
What compromise?
What Councilor Joyner, Councilor Denton said, you reduce the amount and you just had it to ten.
To, to what?
So, it's, it's, so it's what Dr. Manker said, you get seventy five hundred for your travel and then you get three thousand for ward improvement.
No. I like to, uh, make a motion to waive the rules to be able to vote.
Point of order.
Yes ma'am, so you
Point of order trumps.
It's, it is a work session, it's not a call for action, and there's still discussion on the floor, so.
So, so the work session would be to direct me to come back with a, a figure for each counselor, that's where we at. And then ask for a vote.
We did that the last time and it ended us up here. And so, what I'm asking for is a motion to waive the rules. So, I have a motion on the floor to waive the rules.
I did, but I forgot this is a work session, so we can't do this.
No, no, you can't waive rules.
For a lack of a second.
He said, she did second it.
Can I, can I ask a question? What number would, what number would, what number would make everybody happy?
Ten five, we agreed on ten five.
Last meeting, we looked at historical information from twenty nineteen, tw- what was it, what were you, were you, you got this?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, based off of twenty nineteen's data, it came up to ten five. The comments even made then was that there's inflation since then, so there's still not gonna probably be enough to cover accurate costs. Just to give people perspective, for NLC, the registration for NLC member is nine hundred twenty dollars. So, this is not cheap, BML, I don't even, I think there's like three hundred dollars. So, my point I'm making is, you try to go down to four thousand if you want to, you're not gonna have anything. Um, but again, we went off of twenty nineteen information, which is for sure outdated on its face. Um, and that's where we landed, so, if people wanna negotiate now, then that's fine, but we did that last time, it was ten five.
So, the motion is seconded.
So, the motion on the floor is to waive the rules.
Yes.
Okay, is there any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councilor Joyner?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
No.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
No.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Motion passes four to two.
I'd like to make a motion to
Four to three, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, set the travel budget at ten thousand five hundred dollars.
I think the motion was five to two.
Five to two.
That was to waive the
Correct, right, I'm sorry, motion to pass is five to two.
Five to two, to waive the, the rule.
To waive the rules, correct.
I'd like to make a motion to set the travel budget at ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Councilor Holloway, seconded by Councilor Pelham, uh, Councilor Denton.
So, what you are making a motion, that each counselor will get ten thousand five hundred plus to three thousand.
The ten thousand five hundred, as Vice Mayor had explained, is for travel.
Thirteen thousand five hundred dollars that we're gonna personally use.
Not, we're not personally using them. You, you know we're professionally using them. And you know it has to be approved.
It's gonna be personal, I don't know anybody else who's gonna use it, but the person that's got the ten thousand five hundred.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Uh, Vice Mayor Gore?
Um, since we haven't traveled in a while, uh, I was just trying to do some research on the fees present day to attend, I know VML is one day in Richmond for Legislative Day, which we used to attend. Now is a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, that's without meals, and that's without travel rates. So, um, a hundred fifty dollars a pop off rip for that, right? And so, for their annual conference, I can't see that because they haven't put the, um, twenty twenty-three for this year's, uh, list up. But I'm trying to look at last year's rate, and before we should travel, it was about three hundred, four hundred dollars, so I can imagine now, it's still like around four hundred dollars to attend BML's, um, conference, again, without hotel mileage, that's just the registration amount. So, just be mindful, again, I know BML, as mentioned, NLC is high, but BML is equally as high, if you put it in perspective for just being in Virginia. The other thing I would say, again, people are still not thinking about the fact that this goes for all engagements, not just uh, BML, NLC, like I mentioned before. Uh, we have other engagement we wanna do, this pays for it. Um, lastly, I'll say, a- again, I don't know why this is personal to council. Why this is like a political topic for council? Um, staff goes to training and conferences, uh, themselves, and they will argue it's for their professional development, it's no different for us. So, if you wanna cut travel, cause of concerns about the budget, then cut it across the board like it was done beforehand. Um, to make an i- i- impact or a difference. So, if we're not gonna do that, then please stop making it be about council, as if people are again, trying to do something for personal gain when that is not the case. It's professional development, it's to get us resources to the city, there's documentation where that pays off financially and with supplies historically in the past. So, if you were to not make it personal, then cut travel across the board. Cut, cut, was it, the concern is getting three thousand dollars, cut. Whatever, divided up by department, including ours, and cut by that differential, then you'll get your number.
Okay, uh, seeing no more lights, roll call please.
Councilor Joyner?
No.
Councilor Harris?
I pass, I'm not gonna vote on this.
Oh, you can pass.
I pass.
Pass means yes.
Right, we need to be educated.
There's something missing here. Something missing. And, uh, I listened to the discussion, and that's just what a vote is not for discussion now, so, I guess if I pass, it's a yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well then, I vote yes. I vote yes, for this.
Mayor Parton?
No.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
No.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Okay.
Moving on to outside, well, let me clarify. Um, on Tuesday's budget, I will be bringing back to council for the approved budget. Um, i- in the council budget, each counselor will, will receive a travel budget of ten thousand five hundred dollars. And with the ward grant remaining at three thousand dollars, do we all agree? Moving on to outside agencies, um, for the discussion. There has been some arrangements here, you can see down at the bottom, um, the, the savings, I put in a pink column, which is the savings of where we have, um, made some cuts. Um, I yield the floor to open up to counselors to have a discussion, um, as they can, uh, take a view, take a look at the, um, outside agencies and see where else, um, you prefer to cut. Um, I think I've been able to cut as far, um, back as I possibly could, um, saving the council seventy four thousand two hundred and seven dollars.
The question Uh, hold on, Councilor Pelham has the floor, then Vice Mayor Gore, and then Councilor Holloway.
Okay, the, the city of Refuge, is this from the budget, why, why would put them in the fifty thousand from the budget with the, uh, opioid money, I thought they were gonna get seventy thousand.
They are, yes ma'am. They, they'll have to receive both, and here are the reasons why.
I have no problem with them receiving both.
Oh, okay, okay.
Wanted to make sure that
Well, I, I guess if any, anybody
Affect the opioid money that they're getting.
She says she was just making sure that, that didn't cancel the opioid funds.
No.
Okay, so they get, alright, great.
Vice Mayor Gore?
No.
You're not finished, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Uh, so the outside agencies and the ARPA money, is that, this is what we're discussing both? Or just the outside agencies?
This is just outside, we, we, we haven't moved on to ARPA yet.
Okay, and what, why was, uh, OC three taking off?
OC, where, where is she?
Organization of Concerned Citizens and Churches.
Right.
That was never seen on here.
Oh. It was never, in the original budget, it was never funded, so it was never removed. It was just, they put in a request, and we, obviously, we receive more requests and funding than we have dollars for, and so it was just one that was not considered.
The ARPA funds?
We, we can use ARPA funds, yes ma'am, if you'd like to move it over there.
Yeah, I, I would, they do a lot for the city. And, um, one other question, hold on.
Point of information. This goes even further to the, the travel, because I believe that we were cutting funds, particularly to make up for that, so you've cut the seventy four thousand dollars, which covers the amount um, for, for that travel. Is that correct? That's the reason why we were asking you to cut in the first place? Alright, I just wanna put that on the floor.
No, no. The money, I, I understand that, but that was after the conver- this was all prior to the conversation about, which we haven't gotten to that conversation in this work session, about new positions that needed to be added. That seventy four thousand covers the grants manager's position.
No, 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 no.
People saying to cut this to pay for travel. Vice Ma- Mayor Parton said he wants to look at the positions for the PMO, so, he's correct, it started with
Yeah, it started.
Right, but, but, but today's work session is gonna clarify, we're still in a propose.
Right.
But that is how, that is where I got the money from, to pay for the, the grants manager, if approved.
So, when did that morphing take place? Because what I'm, what I asked, what, so this was a morphing that happened outside of what we directed. Our direction in the last meeting was asking you to cut financing from here. Because we had all agreed that travel was necessary, we just, we just weren't in agreement with how much and where the funds were. So, the seventy four thousand dollars has been cut for that purpose. I haven't been made aware of this morphing situation concerning changing it to support, um, what'd you say?
A position.
The position, cause I didn't, I wasn't even aware that we voted to include that position. Okay, I just wanted to bring clarity.
Discuss that until we had a work session.
We're, we're having a work session, so, when you ask where, how are we gonna get the funds? This is my attempt to keep the budget in line without having to come up with additional funds.
Right.
Right, so, what Right, so what, what my, what my.
If you don't vote to have the ma- the grants manager officer position, those funds then will reallocate. Back over to uh the ten, the ten-five, but we have to have a vote one way or another as to what we're doing, so the money. But thi- this is, this is my delivery, okay? You guys still have to vote. So we're still on outside agencies though.
No, I didn't go yet, I just got a point of information.
Your turn.
It's my turn?
Yeah.
Yeah, so just piggyback on what Counselor Holloway said, I get what you're saying, Dr. Maker, but, but we're saying is. We never instructed you to do that for the grants manager. It was brought up on the floor for this in the P M O. And we said, there was majority that said we did not want to pursue the grant manager. Or the P M O and to have a work session about, now granted, this is a work session, but these funds should not have been cut to per- for a position that we didn't ask. To even be considered, to be looked at. And I think that's the point that was being made, is that majority specifically said. Not to pursue that at the last work session, so I'm not sure what your direction was after this meeting. But also to, I mean, I'm just saying, it's not your, if not you, if you're giving other instructions, that is not what we said, so just to be clear also, um. When it pertains to that, um, the Med Flight, I'm not sure why did we cut it, because we just had them come like two years ago. And that new company to the hospital, to talk about partnership, so do they not need our funding?
No, they don't, they actually sent the letter, which I have, indicating that, um. They are not requesting any uh funding um amount for the F Y twenty-one budget, so. Um, it seems that they have it uh paid through other mechanisms.
Okay, Hopeful Prince George Chamber, did you sign that contract that I had um asked about for the tourism?
Our economic development, um, Mr. Bennett did look into that, he had expressed to me that. The, the part he could live without, but he felt that the economic, the, the chamber was his extended staff. And um if he had to choose one, could, could, could that remain?
Okay, but I asked for the contract to make a decision, not his opinion about what he thinks we should do.
Right, and I have the contract, I just didn't email it out to everyone.
What was the amount in there and what did it do for tourism?
The amount was around forty-one and then there was a small amount for tourism, a little like tu- ten thousand.
Alright, so this doesn't need to stay at fifty-two, it can be at the forty-one thousand to accommodate what he's asking for, right? What I'm saying is if he wants to keep the.
He wants to keep the tourism as, as well. As a, as a part of it, because he expressed that he's due, he hasn't developed a plan for tourism. At least for the year and so he can provide with the, yes, provide council with the plan. How to move forward with tourism, that, that is something he needs to lean on as far as the chambers.
Is to keep this for another year to help him get his bearings?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
But when he was hired, he was hired for tourism as well?
Yes, specifically in the job, yeah, we actually, when we created the position, going back to last year's budget. We said to cut the chamber and the part because of tourism and to create, use those saved dollars to create. Economic development position to do economic development and tourism, which is why I keep harping on the contract and the tourism element because we s- that was what was directed. So I'm fine, council's fine with his request, um but. We'll have to look at next year to see what we're gonna do, but that's what he was hired to do. Um, alright, fine, um. Feedmore and legal aid, I would like to ask those to be put onto the ARPA list for consideration, um.
Absolutely.
Feedmore, cuz that keeps coming up in the community, especially after COVID, um I think, I don't know, Dr. Maker, if you have an updated number, I think half the city uses. Um food pantry?
Food pantry.
Um so that's a lot of people that use that as a source of um food. And then also for legal aid, they have started to come to see to provide services, um at no cost for citizens. In the community services building space, so it would be helpful to give them some assistance to provide support to citizens. And then also there was a partnership with the uh planning department about a year and some change ago to work on eviction assistance. That really hasn't funded fully, so and that is in partnership with legal aid, we supported them in that effort. So to give them some dollars would be helpful since they're already presently here, um as of this year, they started doing services in the building. Um and then also, like I said, we had a partnership with them, so I would like to move both of those to ARPA for consideration. Um but everything else, um, I'm fine with what you have suggested. Thank you for doing this.
It's at the top, in the blue, in the blue, the second one, in the blue.
Okay, are you finished? Okay, uh Counselor Holloway?
Madam Vice Mayor, do you um have an amount that you would like to see for the legally?
Um, I personally do not have a, a, an amount, um, that's like a Director Ward kinda question. Um, I can message him to see if he has a suggestion.
He's out of the country.
He's out of the country? Oh, well, I guess he's not gonna respond, so. If she has a suggestion on that, um but I don't have a particular. Yeah, but he's out of country, like he's vacationing.
So, so would it be, it's.
Doctor Maker, what she thinks is a good number based off of what she's crunching here, I personally have a little preference.
Okay, and, and you don't have one either for the well food pantry, ill, you said you wanna see whole well food pantry also moved off of?
No, I said Feedmore and legal aid.
Okay.
Yeah, what's the difference between Feedmore and?
That's two different things, feed, right, Feedmore brings food down.
They bring it to you.
Do they give the food to the work?
No, it's Feedmore themselves.
They, they set up, and then you can sign up.
And they had a location in Clooney Heights, I'm not sure if they're still there, but they've always sent us requests, like, I'm not saying through the budget, but through like. Letters and stuff to get support in Hopewell because of people inquiring, but they're just not set up here because we haven't funded them.
Well, I do know they give food to like the House of Prayer, there are some organizations that they do. The first Saturday of every, at twelve o'clock, they go, they give a certain number of meals to the House of Prayer and they give it to the community.
Well, well, they don't, they don't give it to the House of Prayer, they partnership with.
With them.
The organization, but Feedmore themselves park there as the people come up.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so they already here, but I don't know if they, is this to expand to go to different churches?
I would say either five or ten thousand, preferably ten thousand to try to match the consistency with some of these other or outside groups. That's been requested, so to have cons- consistency, I would probably say ten thousand.
Yeah, ten thousand. And you talking about for Feedmore, right? Oh, legal aid as well?
And then, um, Dr. Maker, um Crater, the workforce, did, did they, I think they had ten thousand at first, but did they request ten thousand? Forgot what, um.
Um, it was, uh, it was ten thousand, um. Both the lamb and the crater was ten thousand and it was reduced to five.
Okay.
Partnership with the school, can we add?
The Crater Regional Workforce Office, um, I would like to increase them up, back up to ten, only because. They um are the city's workforce e- entity for federal weola dollars. Um we get about a million dollars each year for workforce development, however, those weola dollars cannot be spent on marketing. Or for other staff, um, and there has been a cut at the state level to reduce. Positions in the Crater workforce, in our, in our Crater workforce office, um, so. The money that we're asking each locality to provide will go towards marketing directly to their constituents for workforce services, so that's youth. Dislocate youth that are not in school, adults are dislocated workers and veterans, um and those are barriers to employment, so. Um, if we want to market opportunities for training with paid positions and employment and even career coaching, et cetera. Um this will allow us to be able to do that in the city, um because they do not have funds for marketing. In addition to that. Um as I said, the state did cut positions, um cuz the governor is creating this whole new workforce agency. And he's consolidating resource with the V E C and some other groups or whatever because of the unemployment complaints that have stemmed from COVID. As a result, he's taken six positions out of our office for front-facing staff to help provide technical assistance to people looking for employment. And so this will help us potentially put in for a pot of money to have people that will come to solid offices in Hopewell, from my understanding, so. I would suggest if you want to prioritize workforce development, which I know is also something important to. The economic development, um higher director, Mr. Bennett, um then I would increase it back up to ten thousand, um for that particular.
So, uh, point of information for that, so are we, are you asking that that six thousand eight hundred and forty-five amount be increased or are you asking for the?
For the Crater Regional Workforce.
Crater region, so are you asking that to be increased to ten thousand or are you asking to add them over here for five thousand or?
It doesn't matter, whatever you guys want, I was just trying to get them the ass that they asked for, so either council, if they choo- if council chooses to. Increase it here, which I don't recommend, just go ahead and use the ARPA funds since we're trying to get rid of it and give them five thousand over there. It's up to council what you choose to do, if you choose to support it.
I'm in support on that while I had the floor, um, the, the other thing I was about to ask for was. Um, we are in partnership already with the well, allocate certain funds and they have been talking about, um, the need. For more funds and if, um, I think everybody probably here has done a tour there and see the work that they do. So I'll be in support of asking for uh twenty thousand dollars for them.
What now?
The whale, for the whale.
The whale's budget is, is wi- within the school's budget, so.
Yeah, so we alloc- we in partnership with them, I went over the finances with them, we in partnership with them. One issue that has happened, they never got, the, the council allocated a hundred thousand dollars to them. They haven't received that entire hundred thousand dollars, they only received seventy-five thousand, the twenty-five thousand that was given back from. Um Parks and Rec hasn't, hasn't gotten to them. Uh, and I've been telling you about that and asking about it off the floor several times, so I was asking for that in the ARPA funds to be given. For whatever reason, I'm not sure, hasn't.
We, we are currently researching what happened in the, in the, in the transfer, that's just something that's gonna take a little time. Um but they should, when the office of youth closed down, all those monies were rerouted to the school, so I'm not really sure.
It was rerouted seventy-five thousand, remember, uh, Parks and Rec was here and again, I've been at. I've, I've, I've been talk, I've talked to finances over at the school department, also the director. Um Sunny, uh forget her last name right now, but anyway, uh, they don't have that twenty-five thousand dollars.
I think you need to go back to the minutes, even though I'm not supportive of what happened whatsoever, um, I believe what. The majority decided to do was to give Parks and Recreation twenty-five thousand of the hundred thousand.
That's correct, that's what happened, so I asked, there was a question that I asked that, um, Dr. Maker on the floor. Asked Director, uh, Tabitha to come, Martinez to come up, she came to the m- mic. It was supposed to be like some type of partnership between the two organizations, which that. Became like non-evolved because of the things that the whale puts on itself, so Director Martinez said. They sent tho- that twenty-five thousand dollar funds back to the general funds and it never made it to. Um, the school division according to the finance director there, so.
News to me, I didn't, I've never heard that.
Right, I, yeah, I brought it to the attention several times and so, but again, I'm requesting for. Counselor to add on the ARPA fund, uh, in support of them and all the things that they do for the kids is a, it's a city. And school-supported project already, um, if we could give them twenty thousand dollars.
Alright, um, it'll be myself and then Counselor Joyner next, um. You know, I know the intent and purpose of this work session was to do one final budget work session. Of our actual working rough draft budget and it was to go over outside agencies. And that we did, you know, talk about, you know, cutting funds because we did have to. You know, fill the void for what a majority of council wanted to do with the travel budget, however, I know specifically. When we talked about this, I, you know, mentioned that I wanted to see us talk about. The P M O services, where we're gonna get the money from, the audit positions, where we can cut funding here on outside agencies. In order to fund some of these positions that the audit is telling us we need. They're telling us that we need an assistant director or assistant finance director, we need a grants management officer. And we need additional accounting technician support for reconciliations. And those are going to be ongoing expenses and so reducing the amount of, you know, money that we have, you know, for. Ongoing expenses in our outside agencies would complement and support this. So that was, you know, the reason why I asked that and council did not object to it at all, so.
Object to what?
To including that in this discussion tonight, because that's why when we did the blanket approval, when we were rushing to do the ARPA funds. We said we were taking out P M O services and we're taking out the other stuff to talk about it tonight.
Correct, but just for kind of clarification, just so I can understand what you're top following your points, we did agree to that, but we didn't agree to cut funds and tell her to make money for a position.
No, that, that was part of my ask and then that's why.
Ask for that though, right?
No, when I made the ask, everyone up here gave the north and south and said, yes, let's consider this. Didn't say we were taking action on it, but we were considering this, because we're adding a lot of money back into here for outside agencies when we were looking at. Reducing and again, you know, we need to find a way of funding at least these three positions. And one recomission, uh recommendation that I gave, that I know that Dr. Maker wasn't really keen on. Was to do away with the assistant city manager in order to fund, you know, one or two of these jobs. Um, so, and my biggest thing that I wanna see out of this budget is us putting money and funding. Towards rectifying these issues, because it's gonna take ongoing revenue and I believe it's gonna take one-time revenue that we can use from ARPA funds. Uh, Counselor Joyner and then Counselor Denton.
I, I would agree uh with Mayor Parton's statement, um I also do not support the assistant city manager's position. Um, I'm just concerned that, um, we just, we just really need to be, obviously, I'm looking at the ARPA listing up here, we haven't gotten there yet. But so there are, there are some dollars being set aside for P M O services, but we, um, we are going to need. Um additional accounting technicians, um, it's, if you look very carefully at the. Audit recommendations, that is one of the things and they, they will not be, perhaps they're not gonna be ongoing, but for immediate for the, in the coming year. In order to get us caught up, we are going to need to fund a lot of uh accounting technician positions. And uh so I'm, I'm very aware of, of where you're coming from, um, that assistant city manager position has a total of a. Almost two hundred thousand dollars right there, um, and um so I'm, I'm concerned about that. I, I was gonna say though, I, I thought you did a great job, Dr. Maker, of looking at the outside agencies, you know, I knew you had to come up with those and I appreciate that. That what you've done, I'm looking at though the outside agencies, I'm looking at, I mean, the Beacon Theater, um, can we, can we pull something from there?
We actually gave direction for that the last time in there, it consists of agreement.
You did give direction to reduce that, however, when meeting with the finance director, he indicated that that is at, we absolutely. They need that in order to make budget, um, and that they can't survive without that, those dollars, so.
Did you finish with the floor, Counselor Joyner?
Sure, yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, next is Counselor Denton. Well, we, we got counselors interrupting, and, yeah, everyone's gonna get their turn, I won't deny anybody a chance to speak. Just, you know, please be respectful to others.
Okay, I agree with what the mayor has said. And also what, um, Counselor Joyner has said, except for one thing. And I do think we do need an assist- And I do think we do need an assistant city manager. Um, this is one of the reasons we're behind, because one person cannot run that office. Completely by themselves, she, she's entitled to vacation, she's entitled to some time off. She has appointments she has to make, and it's really not fair to our city or to her. Not to have somebody she can call to do that, and we don't have anybody, everybody's new, all of our directors are new. So nobody can really help her. And even if it's not, uh, Dr. Manker, it's gonna be another city manager. And as you know, um, I like March, and he was a good, good city manager. But a lot of things we asked him to do, he didn't get done. Dr. Manker, we asked her to do something, she gets back to us.
Say that again, Counselor Denton?
Back to us in a timely fashion.
And March didn't.
And at times he did not, I, I told the truth, I'm, I'm not gonna deny. But I also said he was a good city manager.
I heard you.
Okay, so, I'm just saying that I, I do feel like if we're going to move forward. We certainly need to have, and I think that was part of the audit. Was to have a, not a city manager, but an city manager's staff. Which means quite a few, so we're behind the ball already, but anyway. I'm here tonight to tell you. And I hope I don't have to say, I told you so.
Come on.
But everybody here wants to add, add, add money to this budget. We have got a job to do, maybe we need to get the state back in here again and tell us what we've got to do. We have got to hire people, we have got to get down and get our city in order. And if we're going to do that, we have to make some sacrifices, and I love to give people money. I would love to do it all day long, but right now, we cannot do that. We need to cut where we can. It doesn't mean I'm not for travel, it doesn't mean that I'm not for doing things for organizations. I'll, I'll just pick on one right off the bat, and you all know, I love Weston Plantation, Weston Manor. They do a good job for our city, but they get ten thousand every year, I'm willing. To say we need to cut that back a little bit this year. We just can't do it, it's not that we don't want to. I want to do everything, but we can't. I kiddingly. Go in and see Dr. Manker on my Mon- Monday meetings before council meeting, and I'll say, Dr. Manker. Have you found that money tree yet? Don't I? She hasn't found it yet, we're trying, between Mr. Terry and Dr. Manker, we're trying to find the money. But please, you've all got to realize, we've got to make some sacrifices, okay? Have I convinced you?
Oh, I, I was just gonna add, I, you have, I agree with you, I'm not taking that from you, but I wanna make sure. You do have this clarification, the things that we're adding with the outside agencies are one-time ARPA funds. That we're talking about, so that can be used towards the positions.
Things right here?
Yes, those from.
One point three million, one point four, I can add. About three million right here.
No, 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 I was saying, I was saying, I agree to the fact that. We, we're gonna do the state budget thing and hire the people necessary, but what I was saying was. These fundings cannot be used to hire a permanent person. It can only be used, because these are one-time funds.
But do we have the money?
No, these are ARPA funds that we are distributing to outside.
This adds up to more than what you've got.
Oh yeah, because we have to come together to agree on it, with, some people requesting more, but we just gotta agree on it.
But don't you think the needs of our city? What makes our city run, if you've got a, I see the, uh, Mr. Curvin out there. If he's got a piece of equipment out in the plant that's not running, he's got to get that piece of equipment fixed. So he can run the, the, his plant and make money, that's what it's all about. We've got to do the same thing, we've got to buy equipment, we've got to do things to keep our city running.
No, I was saying, I agree with you, but the ARPA funds have limits on what they can be utilized for, so that's why. When the state, uh, Secretary of the State was here, he told us that we had a limited time to utilize these funds. So in the last.
You gonna pick which ones you wanna do?
Yeah, we, we're supposed to be making agreements with that.
Our city manager has a grasp on all of this, I trust her.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton still has the floor.
Oh, I thought she said.
I'm just, I'm just saying to everybody, please. If you've never done it. Let's get serious and really work together to get this city. Running like it should be running, and it's gonna take all seven of us. And it's a give and a take. And we have got, there are certain things we have got to do, we have no choice. So let's get serious and not. Put things on here that are wishes, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Pelham and then Counselor Holloway.
Oh, I thought we had moved on to the, the ARPA funds, uh, so.
Okay, Counselor Holloway.
I, I'd like to put a motion on the floor. To wait the ru- do I need to wait the rules again, or are they already waived? Alright, good, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to hire, uh, Dr. Manker as the full-time city manager. And remove her from the seat of interim manager.
Uh, that's improper, we, that's not on the publicized agenda for tonight.
That's why I made a motion.
Hire somebody off the dais without going through personnel and the process of advertising and. And I don't think. Go to the conference, okay, so let's go to the conferences and learn.
Denton just agreed to the ten thousand five hundred, I think I heard her say. So I withdraw the motion tonight.
Okay, can we continue with outside agencies?
Yes, please do.
The less, uh, um, the only change that I see here that was requested was the, the increase in the. Crater Regent back to ten thousand, um, like to put, someone put a motion on the floor. To accept the outside agency budget with the inclusion of, um, ten, uh, five thousand dollars added back to the Crater Regent.
It wasn't advertised for us to accept it, so I, I don't think we should really do that until we do it in the public. To, when they, we advertise, to make all these acceptance at a work session, I don't think it's healthy.
That's what I thought we were supposed to be doing this.
If this is a work session, then she's gonna bring it back to, so we can talk, we can.
I think she's trying to get consensus.
Not the actual vote, the consensus.
Dr. Manker, will you read through the changes, and then we're gonna find out what the consensus is going to be?
The only change to the outside agencies is to increase the Crater Regent workforce development. To ten thousand dollars.
I thought we changed it.
It was, it's now five, and, um, Counselor Gore is asking if everyone would agree that we increase it.
Point of information.
To ten.
I thought she changed it and said five thousand to the ARPA.
That, it, it might not make offer, cause offer the way you would, like she said.
It's always been in outside agency.
The only reason I was bringing that up is the discussion, because as Counselor Denton and the remainder of them said. I thought we were trying to reduce the amount for the budget cost here, to make up for what y'all were requesting. And add the five thousand to the ARPA fund, so that the outside agencies are out of the regular budget. So that the budget can be met, I thought that was the purpose. The, she just spoke to the fact of not increasing the amount in the actual budget so that we can hire and, and take that five thousand to put on ARPA.
Okay, is that the consensus of everyone?
Cause I thought we were trying to reduce the budget amount so that we can. So that's my agreement.
Alright, so we moved it over to ARPA, let's have the ARPA cons- um, discussion.
What is, uh, uh, the winter's shelter, is that the, uh, that went up from ninety-four thousand to one twenty? Or is that one twenty from last year?
What are we looking at?
The winter sess- the winter.
Oh, the warming shelter.
Oh, the warming sess- uh, shelter, um, it was, no, it was one twenty last year.
Yeah, it was one twenty.
We didn't pay one twenty before, but last year we started for the first time, was the contract amendment.
But we, with, this year is the year to put out, out a R F P, we, the agreement has expired. With the current vendor, and so we'll be putting out a R F P for winter shel- shelter services. In July.
And the, the symphony, is that for one show or two?
That's just a donation, I, I, I imagine that they ask all localities to help support and.
That's normally we get them to come here to give our citizens a, a show, a form. It's a donation, but the, in turn, they give normally, I think, I thought, two shows a year, but maybe it's one.
We've always given them five thousand for what they've done.
Okay, there's one during Christmas. Just remember that you need to coordinate that, that they come here.
Can we do one more thing too, uh, if we're trying to reduce the cost, if everybody would agree, the. Where was it, City of Refuge is fifty thousand here? Can we move that over to outside, I mean, to the ARPA funds, and then we can decide how much money we're going to actually deviate? I mean, um, how much money we're going to split, cause we, we haven't come up with the actual numbers that we're gonna do for ARPA. But I figure for this year, we can remove the fifty thousand from out of the regular budget to help with the costs that we're talking about saving.
We, unfortunately for the City of Refuge, we cannot, because the opioids, uh, settlement agreement. Indicates that we cannot surplant dollars, so we have to show that we have been giving. The location a certain amount of money, we cannot.
Do you know how much a certain amount of money is?
Fifty, this is what we've been giving them.
Oh, you're saying so we can't reduce the amount? Is there anything else that council members may see that we can do that too? That we can remove it from off of the budget over here in ARPA funds?
The Beacon, the Beacon, and that's, I was trying to ask that question. But before I ask that, I just wanna make sure Ms. Tom, her question she was asking, I thought it was two shows. But you wanna ask Dr. Manker to make sure it's two shows or one show?
Just make sure we, that we get a show for our citizens, that's without.
You talking about the Beacon?
When he switched over.
I got a question.
So then, but hold on.
Oh, sorry.
So, the, um, Dr. Manker, when he was talking about the Beacon, what I was trying to ask is. Is that assumption for Ms. Terry in regards to their budget based off of their current programming, because. They can reduce what their expenditures are based on what we give them. So it seems like that's the baseline for them to operate historically, but if we give them less money, that's a less show. Or whatever, so they can adjust, it's, that's just my personal opinion, and you already know how I feel about the Beacon, they're part of the audit. There's no accountability, I've been wanting, I've, I've been wanting, it sounded like, you know, I've always wanted to. Um, reduce their funding and also, um, get rid of the L L C. Um, and then also, in fact, we, some council members have requested for them to give a marketing plan in regards to what their shows are. And we also gave money for cultural activities that I have not seen there at all. Um, I have no interest in going to the Beacon because the shows do not suit me and my, my demographic. So with that being said, um, I don't know why we keep finding them at a steady amount when they can't give him finances.
Can we reduce them, please, I would like to really see them reduced, I don't think it's necessary to give them that money. Especially when I learned that the city can't even utilize their building for free, we just paid for a roof. Two hundred thousand dollars, and we giving them a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and as a city, we can't even use one of the banquet halls when need be for a city event. Can we change that to a hundred thousand dollars, please?
No, I'm just, I think we need to hear from the finance.
Reduction, can you, can you come to the podium, I'd like a question for you, please. This, this lack of, uh, to not being able to reduce has to do with their expenditures, because this. This is a private L L C that is ran and operated outside of anybody in the city. And they can't afford it because of their personal expenditures, correct?
I believe, um, I can answer this.
LLC expenditures.
Counselor Gore put it in the proper perspective, is that if you reduce their budget, they will have to reduce. What they're able to perform and to deliver, this per talking to the representatives there. They're at this threshold that they need this amount to be able to operate. So if you reduce it, they will have to have a reduction in what they are able to provide.
Okay, and I think last time we did have a consensus to drop it to one thirty, when you left out of here.
I think we said one fifty.
I was the one that brought it up, and I specifically said one thirty.
How you just pull a number out of the sky and say one thirty, you don't know what.
Because we are giving to them, and unless we are able to give them more requirements. This is something that one, we don't have to do, we have been doing it, and it has not served us in a space, and like. Forty-five thousand, forty thousand people a year. And I agree that it brings the forty thousand people a year, I'm not taking away from that, but what I'm saying is, at this point. How are we paying for two hundred thousand dollar roofs, how are we paying a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year? And have no ability to utilize rooms over there as the city, how?
I, I think the best course of action would be to continue in this budget until council come up with a plan. I know that there's been discussion about what to do moving forward, it, it may be that next year, we have a totally new plan. But, you know, we're here at the end of the budget leg. We're, talking about removing something that is a, a livelihood, a lifeline.
City manager, so it doesn't stay in the air. It's just something you need to understand, the question he's asking is not really funding or financial. The question is being asked is that they are technically right now deemed as an enterprise fund.
Correct.
And because you're making contributions to them as an outside agency. Their position is an enterprise fund, they're either charging a service fee or whatever, so that's probably the platform. That, that perhaps, I understand the equity of what you're saying, or injustice of what you're saying. But that's probably the platform, and I'm not speaking on that behalf, I'm just giving you what I'm looking at, cause when I went back and looked at some of the old cafers. When they first started out, um, they were not technically, um, called an enterprise fund. It was put in as like a minor, um, minor fund and, uh, operating fund. And it stayed underneath that category as enterprise fund, and next year it changed, and has been that way since maybe fourteen, fifteen. And an enterprise fund is supposed to be self-sufficient, and as you know, Beacon is not self-sufficient, we're giving them a contribution, a city.
So that's, that's where I am with it, taxpayer dollars is going to that theater.
Yes, sir.
And most of the people who are coming to that theater outside of the city and respectfully, at this time, other than the Be- At this time, other than the Beacon growing with their mother, we don't even have lodging and or restaurants to support the night shows. So again, I think we need to reduce the amount of support that we're giving with no benefit in return. Especially when they were expected to have certain obligations to this city that they have not lived up to. If we reduce Mr. Terry, the amount of money as an outside agency to them, that only simply reduces what they do. They make a profit. Are you aware of that? Do they make a profit?
Looking at how we are putting together their statements currently. No, it's a, it's a, it's a struggle looking at their financials. They don't, they don't really do good bookkeeping. I can tell you that now.
So the owners are not taking any money home? Uh, again, it would be my thought to reduce the amount of money for them, especially if council in the city has. Had certain requests from them that they are not meeting and making. Prior councils have put into place certain requests from them. Their financials are not together properly. They were included in the audit as not doing so. On top of them not doing what they're supposed to financially, they are not meeting other things as. Uh, the vice mayor had um, stemmed to. And then again, we just put on two hundred thousand dollar roof for them. And they were denying us as a city, we paying two hundred thousand dollars outside of the one hundred and seventy thousand we give them every year. And we can't get a meeting space. So, I mean, who else can we uh, give a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to, to open up a business? I'm pretty sure it's plenty of businesses in Hopewell that bring a lot of people to Hopewell and we ain't writing no check to them for a hundred and seventy thousand. And again, the finance director also said that they are set up as an enterprise fund and are supposed to be able to sustain themselves. How long have we been giving them a hundred and seventy thousand? I'll leave that to the room. I think. I think that we need to reduce it.
Councillor Joyner, Councillor Vice Mayor Gore, Councillor Pelham, and then Councillor Denton.
Yes, uh, the Beacon, um, the Beacon is an issue. Uh, I think that's a, a simple way of saying it. Um, I, but it is an economic engine. It does drive visitation into the city. Uh, it does, um, I think at a recent concert, um. Only two tickets, when they did the totals, only two tickets were sold in the city. The rest of them were sold even in some outside countries and it brought in some people. So, but the, I, and I, I don't disagree in concept with, I mean, I would love to be able to cut this all the way. And it's in my warrant and I'm dealing with some issues that relate to the Beacon directly. So I, I, I appreciate where you're coming from. But I don't think it's wise to just cut this number without knowing all of the variables and all of the trickle-down effects that it's going to have. Um, I think that we should take a look at this. If, you know, this is a, a work session, I think it would be useful to go back. To talk to Charles Bennett, Director of Economic Development and see, cause he's done a lot of research of late on this. And to take a look at this and certainly come back with a number that we would feel more comfortable with. I, I agree. I think there's an arrogance about all of this that, you know, they, they do want all these things from the city. But yet they are um, a very insular group, so.
Other question.
That's kinda where I'm at. Um, I would just, I would, I would like to suggest that, um, we get, we ask Charles Bennett to come back to us with. Some of these thoughts on this and where he thinks we should go. And if maybe we, I mean, maybe we, this funding goes someplace else. But I, I hear you, I hear you. I think you're, I think you're, a lot of people are on point. I think most of us probably agree in principle with the Beacon.
Alright, uh, Vice Mayor Gore, Councillor Pelham, Denton, and then Councillor Holloway.
Yeah, so, Mi- Mr. Terry, just wanna make sure it clear. Have they given you any financial updates since we last met with them here and are you getting a clear picture of what they're doing with their finances?
At the, um. Council gave me the opportunity to get a pre-audit team in. And the one person that I've signed to that to do the Beacon. Um, historically, it has taken almost six months to um, reconstruct their entire financial records for sixteen, seventeen. We had that. So the individual I assigned to, um, to work with them, um. I actually had a briefing with that individual yesterday to see what the status. And literally again, on an annual basis, we have to rebuild the entire. Record keeping system to get to a trial balance, to get to, to where I can tell you what their performance was for twenty twenty.
Alright, so you really can't even say how our money is being used? Isn't impacting operations, isn't impacting shows, isn't impacting anything for economic development or tourism, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so if that's the case, um, you can, you can have a seat, sir. If that's the case, we sat here, heard all these speeches about. Getting our finances in order, which I don't disagree with. Um, we talked about accountability. Um, the state came down twice at the request of majority of council. They sat right there, the poem is, and the, the female said that the city used. Uh, had to get external people to recondo our finances and I corrected her and said, no, the Beacon had to get external people to do their finances. But my point is, the state sat here on record and said that in a room with press about our finances. So that's another thing is the city, when it's something we don't control, right? So my point is, we sat here, heard these speeches, we gotta cut our child, we gotta do all this stuff, um. And lead by example, but yet and still we're still funding people and organizations. Money in which we have no accountability for. It makes no sense to me. And so, um. So my thought is, they can have a cut.
Absolutely.
Um, I also will say that, um, this is not like a one-time ask. This has been repetitive for years. Some of us have been asking for accountability with the Beacon Theater, but we haven't had a majority that was willing to do something about it to keep, to hold them accountable. Hopefully with this council, with all the comments about the state and our finances, we might have majority this time to wanna do something about it instead of funding them again. Um, but with that being said, um, why can't our Asher's Terry, Dr. Maker, or even the city attorney? We can earmark money in the budget. We don't have to release it to them.
You're right.
So why can't we force them to come to us with their finances? And a plan with how they choose to use it in the historical context and which they use in the past before we release slides to them.
I'd like to put that motion on the floor.
My recommendation is going to be. Is that we give them a reduced amount of money, whatever that number is. I don't care if it's even five thousand, just give them reduction to prove a point. Um, and then, um, require that they come to council. And give us what we're requesting with the, with the coordination of the finance director prior to us voting to release their funds to them.
Yes, I agree.
I don't see how, you know, we can sit here and talk out both sides of our mouth about we gotta do this, we gotta do that for finances, but not wanna do anything about them. That's my suggestion and that's what I will support.
So, and just so there's no surprises when the reduction come, I think it's fruitful for us to actually. Say what the re- reduction amount.
Down to one thirty.
Yeah, that's too low. You don't, you can't just pull a number up. How good seal and, and say you're gonna reduce something and not know how that's gonna impact.
We're not even gonna be able to get to the space of knowing.
I would just say, my last comment is, majority sat here in twenty nineteen and cut the, the downtown partnerships budget in half. Without knowing anything about how that impacted that organization for economic development exclusively, that's what they do. Economic development, they cut it in half.
Right.
So my point, I'm trying to say is there's precedent for cutting budgets. I don't agree with cutting it in half or maybe even down that low. But my point is, it's okay in my opinion for us to pick a number to reduce their budget by, especially when we have no record. Or any point of reference for how they use it. Since we don't have that, that's even more incentive in my opinion to cut it.
I think you actually had a good workable plan, meaning let's earmark it, leave, leave it alone. Let's not, let's earmark it and before, uh, before they, it's released, let's have them to present. Okay, so no reduction, but just not touch it until we receive some kinda presentation or information.
Presentation comes and we don't want that number. We don't have to give them that number either. We can cut it in.
We, we just don't wanna do away with it. We can earmark.
My point I'm making is just because we earmark it does not obligate us to give it to them either. I'm trying to support you. I'm trying to support you. I'm trying to say, we can do it. By the way, Councillor Holloway, we don't have to give them the one, the, that full amount. We can still cut it after the presentation.
Can we, can we, can I also get the list of, um, obligations that the city council, past city council has. Um, requested or required of them?
Okay, um, if we, if we can locate that.
Say, Councillor Pelham, you have the floor now?
Yeah, I, I agree that the earmark, that, that's wisdom in using that. You can, if it's earmarked and they can't present an adequate finance plan. Which we nev- we never have gotten from them unfortunately. Then that is when you're talking about reducing, because if they don't come up with the plan. And even if they do, we could have a chance to dialogue and see what's what. Can you run us from Munis all the expenditures that they spent out?
Part of the problem. The way it's supposed to work, they're an enterprise fund. We can put them in, but we've asked them, I personally have asked them when I first got here. Which I was held cautious because they held me back, a little hot about it. Is that they should do quick books, send that to us. We can put them in as an agency and get it every month. And then I could answer your question. I haven't gotten that yet.
They, they not on quick books.
They, I don't know what they on. We've been asking for information. And I apologize, but it's very frustrating when someone, every time I bring in a staff person and with the person I brought in now. I assign that person with understanding that we've done a template and the template works. But it's still a struggle to get receipts and bank statements and whatever, and then we have to rebuild all of that.
What'd you say, Councillor Pelham?
Twenty thousand dollars just to get their attention.
Uh, is that a motion? So she suggested reducing it twenty thousand.
Are you finished with the floor? I don't even know. Okay, I guess so, yes sir. Okay, Councillor Holloway.
I'm with reducing it twenty thousand. Come on now, we gotta, we. You know, we be so bold with who we wanna be bold with, then we get chicken scared. To some people and we give them, we enable them. We, we, we enable organizations by not coming to the space of holding them accountable. I've been to council meetings before I joined council several times when. The past councils have been up here so frustrated because they have not given a financial. And then we getting marked up in the paper because. They're not even departments, but I'm gonna use that for lack of a better phrase. Departments won't give up what they're supposed to be giving up or doing what they're supposed to be doing. And it makes it look like Mr. Terry and or the seating city manager is at fault. And I just read a newspaper article that made me upset. Because, to say it nicely. That, uh, said the state secretary came in here and told city council off. I must've missed the meeting and I thought I was here and I ain't never hear him tell me off. But it's stuff like that that happens all because people in quote-unquote departments. Are not holding up to their part. So I'm also in agreement with Councillor Pelham. Let's reduce it by twenty thousand dollars and earmark the funds.
Councillor Joyner and then myself.
I'm fine with, with that approach. The Beacon, I mean, I have been dealing with the Beacon on some other issues. So this is a, a, an issue that's near and dear to my heart. Um, and certainly I don't wanna do, I don't wanna do something that's damaging to the city. Um, I do feel like it is important for still for Mr. Bennett to be involved in this, but I am fine with a twenty thousand dollar reduction. In earmarking those funds. I think that that's a, um, I think it's a reasonable and measured approach.
Get a financial plan.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, they need to turn over the audit records so we can get moving.
It really flies in the face of some things that are going on right now, so, um.
Do you agree with the, uh, uh, she's, which one of y'all says something about, uh, making one of the requirements?
The audit records.
So the financial plan and the audit records in order for them to get that hundred and fifty thousand.
I agree. Moving on, um, the ARPA.
Guys, that's okay. You guys said what I was gonna say. Don't give them the money till they give you the audit information. I don't need to repeat any, what, what's been said. I think there's consensus, Councillor Denton.
The only thing, the, talking about, uh, doing twenty thousand less to the Beacon. And I know you have said we need to give them the one seventy to keep them viable. Is the twenty thousand gonna make any difference? Do you think we ought to keep it at a hundred and seventy? But just not release it until you're satisfied that we have what we need? I don't know how important these funds are.
He said he can't tell.
For the operation of the Beacon.
I'm used to taking hits and being responsible for whatever, but I think it's a mis- misrepresentation here. The Beacon, whoever their financial manager is, whoever their business manager is. Is the one that should answer that question for you. Okay, because I'm not. I, I, I'm, I don't, I really, all I do is basically understand that when they don't have enough. And in the past, when Mr. Hartman was in that seat, they can't make payrolls and we all have to stop to cut a check for them. To be able to do whatever they need to do to get a show going for the weekend. So, so my, so my response is right now that whether it's a cut or reduction to twenty with an earmark. Or you keep it seventy with an earmark, the key is earmark, that they come back and whoever's the representative. They can answer that question that this is, this is what, this is what we need. Um, because basically that's, that's the way it works. In the middle of September or whatever, the shows got to happen and they don't have enough. Or they don't have enough to cover it, they call in the city and ask for a draw of what was set aside for an outside agency. Can I say?
To be on the safe side, maybe hold it a hundred and seventy, but when these financials come in, it may be less. And we can send that to them. Okay.
Somebody else got the floor?
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
Let me tell you something. Now, one thing, I ain't done a lot of this stuff, but this is one thing that I have done, is shows, big shows. Bring the big gospel artists in and things of that nature. And let me tell you something, it makes money. Not a little bit, a good amount. You sit up here talking about paying for a venue that's three thousand dollars, they own that one. So they're not paying for the venue. But I paid thirty-five hundred to six thousand dollars for a, a venue and I'm selling twenty-one hundred tickets at forty dollars apiece. I'm, I don't think they hurting that much. And I think that's the reason why they probably ain't got the financials to you yet. So, I think we really need to earmark these funds and cut them some. I, I truly don't think they're hurting. I think they are coming up here filling us with a bunch of baloney. And making you think they need something that they don't need. And if I'm incorrect, let them bring the printed. Statements from the bank and prove us wrong and then I'll make my apology. But until then, I. But until then, I think that we need to reduce those funds. We, I mean, what other business do we do that, and again, I remind council that they're at about forty thousand people a year that they bring in the city, but it is not economically according to Bennett doing us any good right now because of the fact that they're not lodging here or eating here. They're going to Chester and Colonial Heights to lodge and eat, according to the statistics. So, we can say, if we remove the one seventy, we can never know if they needed that big, let them come up here and prove to us that they need it. And then also, again, what is it really benefiting us? Or are we gonna start giving a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to other businesses? This is a, this is a private LLC.
Okay, Dr. Manker?
So I think the consensus on the floor is to reduce the Beacon Theater to one fifty and also earmark those dollars until the Beacon produce audit information, um, henceforth, not just the twenty twenty, but for all the remaining.
All of them, all of them.
Well, not, we, I was, are we saying at one time, we're, we're saying in order to receive dollars, they need to release.
Every year we can issue a amount out to them if we wanna do that, I mean, every, for every year, we can issue, I don't know how long, how far they're behind, but out of a hundred and fifty we give them, if they five years behind, we can divide that one fifty by five years, and every year they give us, we can give them that money.
And, and to produce a audit plan, so that's the directive from the outside agencies. Okay, moving on to the new positions, we'll save the ARPA discussion for last cause that's gonna generate the most discussion, I believe. Uh, the FY twenty-four new position request, I've presented to you all the requested positions. The three that were added was to the finance department, which is the accounting tech, the rec- um, the grants management coordinator and the assistant finance director, which is budgeted for, for the budget, um, division, um, of the finance department. Those are the newly added position, uh, in the budget I had requested initially in the proposed budget for the assistant city manager and for the deputy, um, fire chief. So I yield the floor to the mayor to have, open the floor for discussion regarding the additional positions requested.
Can you clarify that one more time? Did you just say that you did include in this, in your revised budget, the positions that were recommended from the audit?
Not, not, the, 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 the only one that's included is the grants management.
Okay.
Um, officer, um, but nevertheless, all positions are approved by council. Any new creation of any position has to have the approval by council. Um, whether it's the assistant city manager's position or, or the deputy, it still needs an approval by council.
Okay.
So tonight's discussion is to determine, um, which, if any, or if all positions are approved by council.
Okay, I have Counselor Holloway, Counselor Joyner, then Counselor Denton.
I was just about to speak to the fact that I'm in agreement with, uh, whoever said we do need, I think it was Counselor Denton, that we do need an assistant city manager, um, again, all the rest of localities have them, and I don't see why we wouldn't be following that precedent. I also do believe, um, I personally believe that it's, it's not on this list maybe, but we probably need a, our own auditor around the clock around here, if we're gonna add any position. I feel that more than even the, um, just the grants manager, because the auditor will be able to audit every department and that would include making certain that the, um, grants fundings are used properly. There was something else y'all just named. Oh, so we're at ninety-four thousand is the bottom number now with savings? Cause we added the twenty thousand from the Beacon.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're at ninety-four thousand with that, and I, I don't remember if, okay, so is there any other? My question would come back to what I asked a few months ago, is there anything else on the list that we don't have to retain here on this list that we're donating? Let me see. Can the? Who's the other one I saw was fifty thousand, it was like, uh, fifty-two thou- oh, that, that, can we, are we able to move that whole world Chamber of Com- Commerce? Or one of those other large numbers, uh, what was it? I know we can't use the, move the, uh, partnership to over there because they also re- grant. Um, but could, could we possibly move the Chamber of Commerce to the ARPA?
What, what is the objective here? So I'm, I'm lost.
Remember, I was asking a question about, we're trying to reduce cost over here to put over here so that this can increase to be able to support hi- uh, to support the hire. Yeah, we can change them.
Whatever you cut from here, whatever you cut from outside agencies and move to ARPA, you're gonna have to understand and remember that next year you will not have this here, and if it's a reoccurring expenditure such as salaries, positions, that is not something that you should rely on from outside agencies.
Well, the yellow, the yellow agencies are optional though, right?
Correct, which is why I was not a fan of cutting this to fund positions, because it doesn't make sense to do, it's not sustainable.
Right.
So if we, um, move the chamber, for example, to ARPA, we did that last year, as I was saying earlier, fine, but.
No, well, let's not use the ones that we require to put back, how about the optional ones?
Either way it goes, it's gonna be another outside agency that's gonna want funding, so I guess what I'm trying to say is. Positions out of revenue.
Right, I see what you're saying, absolutely.
Right, Mr. Terry? Okay.
Well, I agree with it.
Okay, uh, Counselor Joyner?
Okay, I just wanna make sure, clear, I'm, these are new position requests, are they in the budget at this time?
The only two that were in the budget was the original ones that were proposed, which was the assistant city manager, the, the, um, deputy fire chief and, 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 and now grants.
And the grant.
Now, uh, the, the reason for the, the, I have, we have not had a discussion about the other two or all three, but nevertheless, the reason why the accounting tech and the assistant finance director did not make it to the budget is because we currently have individuals in the department performing those jobs. Now, it's, it's outlined in the, um, assessment that these positions are cre- uh, need to be created.
Yes.
Um, and that's why they're there, but the, these positions are already been performed by individuals within the department.
So, but the, is the, is the, um, I'm not looking at the, um, assessment right now, but are they suggesting that we add, I mean, if I looked at the, if I looked at the, um, at the organizational chart and I looked at what is existing now and what is proposed, would we need to add positions?
Yes, if, if you're looking at what's proposed.
All right, we, we need, we need to be thinking about what the state is recommending for us to do and make our way to do it. Uh, the, in my op- opinion, uh, because that's why they came, we've gotten this plan and for us to not do what they're telling us to do is not a very smart thing to do. Um, so, but the, so here, the city, the assistant city manager is in the budget
Yeah.
right now, and, um, the, um, the fire is in the budget, but the rest of this is not.
Exactly, right. Um, grants is, grants is in the budget.
The grants, yeah, the grants, yeah, the grants manager.
Is it in the budget or is this a recu- set, a work, work session recommendation?
It is a, it is a, it's a work session.
But it's in there, it's in there.
But that, that one position out of the three was, was what the finance and I was able to include in the budget safely.
Okay.
The other ones we were not able in, at this moment in time, it can be reduced or taken out. It's, it's the pleasure of the council, it has to be approved.
Right now, it is in this balanced number.
It's in this balanced number.
What, what is?
The grants is the only one that's in the bal- balanced number.
So the assistant city manager I thought was.
The grants is one of the new only one, you, the assistant city manager, the deputy and the grants are in the balance
Budget.
Budget based on revenues.
They're based in there, okay, so that, so they're already in there.
The grants one technically isn't in there, because, no, let me change my question. Right. It's because you just made a recommendation tonight with these cuts tonight, so is it really in the balanced budget? Or is it proposed to be added to the balanced budget? Because when you gave us the budget,
Right.
you had the manager and the deputy chief built into your budget, we all knew that. This is a request today, looking at cuts today for the grants manager, so is it, so do you see it, like, is it?
I see what you're saying, what I'm saying is that enough savings was captured to include one out of the three.
Okay, the two fund up to seventy-four thousand dollars is the answer.
That, that's it.
Yeah, not that particular.
Well, the total is ninety-five, but.
Correct, well, ninety-five, whatever, ninety-five thousand dollars was, was a group you paid for another position on the list. Because the assistant city manager and the deputy, uh, chief is in the budget. It's up to us to choose which of the positions on this list we wanna fund with ninety-five thousand dollars. And your recommendation is the grants manager, is that correct?
Yes.
And the assistant finance director, which is definitely part of the, um, that is part of the, um, assessment recommendations, it's not, it's not in the budget and it's a, it's a nice chunk of change.
It is a nice chunk of change. We, we do have assistant finance director, so I, I had a call.
So where's this, you know, that's why I'm confused.
I had a call with, um, Right, right.
Oh, a budget assistant finance director.
But, so, so they're, they are recommending two finance.
Yeah, that sounds like a lot of fluff top heaviness to me.
We also do not, we have to consider spacing as well, we, we are jam-packed in city halls. I'm not really sure where three additional people would sit in the finance department.
Well, we're also ten years behind.
Listen, that's what, listen, don't y'all start me with the state.
Please let Counselor Joyner finish.
I apologize.
So, this, this is, this, this is recommended for the, with the, by the assessment and it's, that's a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that is not, that we, you know, if they're telling us to do it and we don't do it, it just seems like, you know, we're not. Okay. All right, I guess I understand, I, I, my question's really, we're just, what is, what is currently in there and which ones are recommended but yet are not in the budget? Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Holloway, myself, and then Vice Mayor Gore.
I ain't co- I just commented in the middle, I ain't had my chance yet, I was, I asked for upon information.
All right, this is the lineup for who's speaking. Again, I've asked you guys to please keep your lights on and I will nod to you when I see them come on. So it's going to be Counselor, Counselor Joyner's just finished, is Counselor Holloway, then myself, Gore, Pelham, and then Denton.
Pelham, do you wanna go before me? Go ahead, I'll wrote, I'll go after you.
Counselor Holloway's the first one.
So, uh, she can go before me and then I'll go.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I, I just wanted to remind the council that our payroll now is, what, two million dollars a month? Is that correct, Mr.? Two point one million? Mr. Terry?
He, he thinking.
You sleep?
He's thinking.
You know that number right off the top of your head?
He said yes.
It's two million or two point one million? Which is, and how many employees do we have, uh, Miss Amanda?
Four ninety-nine.
Four hundred and ninety-nine people, and we spend two million dollars every month for employees already. And this total number here, if we employed all these people in this thing is another one point one million. So for a city with five hundred employees, I, I surely.
A hundred thousand dollars more a month.
So I guess, I don't know, I guess the average employee has to be making sixty, seventy thousand dollars. But, uh,
Nope.
I, I, I just personally don't believe in, I think we still can wait for assistant city manager. We haven't, uh, interviewed for the permanent city manager and I, and then when the city manager is finalized, I think that person should, uh, let us work and let us know what he, he or she feels if they need assistant city manager. We don't have to obligate the city a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for assistant city manager in, in hopes that we get one soon, and next year this time, we'd be talking about, no one's employed in salary savings and we are spending money somewhere else. So, when people are not employed, that money should go back to the operational fund, it shouldn't just be salary savings for, we just make pet peeve projects out of it now, so I just don't believe we need to hire assistant city manager or put it in the budget. But use that hundred and ninety-five thousand and put it toward an assistant finance director, but anything to do with finance that's gonna improve the health, financial health of the city should be the priority. And even the deputy chief, I, I spoke to one of the farm and he felt like, really don't need a deputy walking around with a white shirt on giving directions, you need somebody like a captain, that's gonna be like a working person as well as a leader. And so instead of hiring a deputy chief, uh, for a hundred and twenty-one thousand, you know, uh, in the, uh, hire a captain maybe for just under a hundred thousand and, and give him some administrative, uh, responsibility and to add to the captains that they do have there and make it a working, uh, leader type position instead of just someone who's gonna give the people under them direction with no, no working, no working, uh, skills. So I, I agree with, they should have another captain and not a deputy chief. And city manager can hold and we can add it when we get everything else straight, when, uh, we have a permanent person in to make that decision whether or not an assistant is, is, uh, needed and viable. And all these other, other positions, anything, of course, to grants, but like you said, I've been asking for an editor, uh, auditor for about six years, Jasmine?
Yes, ma'am.
That we didn't have the, uh, votes to get.
No.
Uh, with prior council, but an auditor will keep everybody uh, on point as we go forward after we get caught up with everything. That auditor type person can go around to all the departments and making sure that they have sound policies that they're following and do the internal audits on an annual basis in different departments so we can be capabrests instead of having a auditor come in and telling us how bad we're doing. So, uh, we do need an auditor still, and I don't know, since the, uh, state recommended the grants person, I guess we can go with that, but we need to keep in mind, we do need an auditor for, for sure. Thank you very much.
Okay, Counselor Holloway?
Two million dollar payroll.
Uh, um, I agree with the latter, but not with the first, I definitely think we need an assistant, uh, city manager. I, I do agree with Counselor Pelham on the fact that oftentimes when you're talking about fire, um, or, or, you know, things of that nature, is a, that's a whole different comparison um, than an assistant city manager, uh, to run around like a chicken. Uh to run around like a chicken with your head cut off in the capacity that our current. Interim city managers sits in. The the person who sits as the assistant city manager definitely won't be a person who's just walking around in a white shirt. Uh so to speak and not doing work. They would be very much boots on the ground as our interim city manager is right now. Um you know, she's definitely not just commanding the staff uh from the perspective of telling people what to do and not actually working. So I I think that assistance and I concur with Madam um Denton. In a in that perspective that she also needs a break um vacations and so forth. Um but again, I will repeat that I think we could probably switch out the auditor for the grants person. Because the grants person would only basically that that they are, the the grants person is auditing grants. So replacing them with the auditor gives us a two and one. It gives us the auditor for the entire city. And they would already, because the grants person, that's what they're doing. They're auditing, making sure that the grants funding was spent appropriately. So I think that the auditor position need to replace that grants position because then we would get two and one instead of just. Um that one position. Y'all got me worked up when you just started mentioning the state. Because um. The state is something else. And uh let it go on record tonight because these are one of my record things I'm talking about boldly. We were in here going back and forth for a moment with state and the state said. That they never agreed originally that they would help us pass the first phase. And that he actually, and I quote, um because I listened to the videos yesterday a couple times, he said we. We are not in the business of taking other cities' monies and utilizing them to help the city of Hopewell. Which indeed, in fact, the money that they already spent was other cities. And that's how federal has passed down the state and state has passed down the federal for that type of assistance. But what I want to put on record tonight and get sent it out to the state and tell them to put Holloway in the paper on the front page if they would like to. Uh he lied. He lied so much. What what's the what's the order?
I think we're getting all of the.
Oh, I'm on the I'm on this topic of these positions with the state in the help. So we right, I'm right on order.
You gotta keep your comments germane to the discussion.
So the discussion at hand is these positions, right?
On the position.
Uh and we were we the whole time we were here.
What you may or may not have been said by the state.
We've been talking about what the state has to do, sir, respectfully about these positions the entire time, and that's what I'm speaking to the fact of.
No, you're speaking about something that's not on the agenda.
So. I thought I heard you talking about these positions and I heard the state name concerning these positions and what they said they would help with and whatnot, right?
Because these positions are part of the state audit, which is part of what the budget requests are.
You can bring a challenge to me, sir, but I'm respectfully.
Comments are.
You you're not fin- you didn't hear my finishing of my comments.
I like the ruling, please.
Um the topics for discussion have to be germane to the topic that so so that. They represent what is being discussed by all city councils. So to be uh fair, um. The topic for discussion right now is are the positions that are before city council.
Correct, which is what I'm I'm duly talking about and that will be expressed when I finish talking about it. The state expressed again con- comments about what they would help with and what they wouldn't help with. I saw the RFP that was sent out by the state and the state in that RFP that was sent out showed. That there was a phase two that they were requesting for A and M to do. That phase two included. So uh assistance with some of these things. And I want that to be on record tonight. Because again, if we're talking about these positions that the state recommended. I think that they said in that RFP request to A and M that was also according to the RFPs. The phase two would be supported in the contract by phase one, so they are obligated to come help us. With these things. Now you're the floor.
So I believe that we can do without assistant city manager. And you know, we can take the deputy, you know, fire chief position and fund the EMS captain position. That funding would give us the necessary funding plus the additional twenty thousand that we had from uh outside agencies. To fund the accounting tech reconciliation support and the assistant finance director budget position. And there we will have, you know, met, you know, more intent of what the auditors are requesting us to do. And that way it is, you know, reoccurring revenue that is also funding this. Um yeah, I think that, you know, you might have to rework the budget. I think that you can, you know, tap somebody. As, you know, a, you know, assistant city manager as an additional assigned duty or responsibility. And either give them a stipend of some sort. Um but, you know, here again. I think that, you know, we've got, again, you know, prioritize, you know, these positions that the auditors have put out. We don't need to venture out to, you know, what we personally think, but I what we need to focus on is what the auditors have told us explicitly to do. Because that is our get well plan. And if we follow their guidance to a T, then, you know, we're going to rectify our issues. Vice Mayor Gore, councillor Denton, and then councillor Joyner.
Okay. Alright, so I I'm in favor of taking the grants manager and converting it to an internal auditor position. That is what we requested in the past. Uh councillor Pelham is correct. We actually have the resolution and job description, anything like that. Um already developed and that was put on the agenda to pass. I ask Mr. Terry a quick question for clarification. The assistant finance director, could that not, if we don't get an internal auditor, could that position not only support the grants oversight? As the assistant finance director is a primary duty? If we don't get an internal auditor, for example, could it the assistant finance director have a primary duty to work on these grants? That the state is recommending that we pay attention to as a part of their workflow? I mean, there's no need to hire no whole position just to pay attention to grants when that could be assigned to someone specifically. In the high level position such as assistant finance director. That's what I'm trying to say.
Frame that question is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And is that realistic to do?
Yes, it is, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um so I don't support changing that. I'm gonna change, keep hiring this position. The other thing is um the state can make recommendations all day long, but they're just recommendations. They sat here and said two times to council that they were not funding anything to help us get these recommendations done. Um so it's one thing to provide recommendations, but it's another to follow them blindly when they're not funding us. Um and then also, they've only been here for six weeks to come up with recommendations. And not have looked at historical stuff in the past, what was done, tried and recommended. So their recommendations are hollow, in my opinion. Um and so with that being said, you know, I don't I don't. Just because the state, that doesn't really mean anything. Um the other thing I would say is.
Amen.
Um.
Does anything the state recommend correlate with what you want?
Yeah, yeah, I was saying with Mr. Terry, like he can, if it's up to Mr. Terry how he wants to use his department, but. It makes sense to have that be an assignment of the assistant finance director or either the internal auditor. Um you can, like you said, get two bays for one buck with having the internal auditor pay attention to the federal grants.
Right.
Because that's a part of their audit function. So I mean, I see how we can compromise by getting what council has needed and requested for years. Prior to states showing up. And then what we see as a recommendation for them, it meets to, it does both things. And it sets us up for future um audits to have somebody on the inside looking at our finances to prepare us for the audits. Um I mean, it just makes sense for us to do internal auditor versus what they're asking for. Um the other thing I would say is um. Outside of the grants manager, if I were to look at what the state recommended, to me, the reconciliation support. Is more of a priority than a grants manager, especially when she sat here and agreed with us that reconciliation is holding up this whole audit process. Not having dedicated people. And we're using outside firms to help supplement, but we don't have a dedicated full time position. So I would recommend if you want to invest in something, if not the internal auditor, get a full time reconciliation person. That seems to make the most sense to me. Um especially when he can dedicate that grants thing to somebody else in a senior level position in his department. So again, if you want to follow the state, then. To use a reconciliation position um as a as a primary uh thing that needs to be done. It makes sense and attracts actually what they said. She sat right here and agreed that we can put any timeframe on getting the grants done four months, three months, five months. It makes no difference. As long as we not have our finances reconciled.
Right.
So if that's the key, then fund the key. So they're contradicting themselves in with their recommendations. Um I would also say, um that's why I was trying to emphasize, and I apologize to Dr. Banker. Um maybe about my approach, but what I was trying to say is, I'm not sure where the side direction is coming from in terms of emphasizing this grants position.
Right.
Versus the other ones that we talked about. Um I support the city manager. I agree with councillor Denton. Um that needs to be done.
Absolutely.
I actually agree with councillor Holloway. If it's on the next agenda to vote her in the city manager, I will support it fully. Um I'm ready. Um there's no reason why not to do that. Um also, I would say in regards to um. Looking at what else is recommended here, um the deputy chief, um I I'm impartial to that. But as far as I'm concerned, we have ninety five thousand dollars of unallocated funds to to create a position for. And I'm in favor of either using ninety five thousand dollars for a reconciliation support specialist, which is seventy six thousand dollars of benefits. And using the other remaining money to potentially fund the assistant procurement officer for twenty six thousand dollars because procurement is issue issue in all of our audits. It's always been a finding in all of our audits. So again, addressing the audit findings go to the source. Ninety four thousand dollars would cover roughly covered those two positions. So I can support using it for that or using it for an internal auditor. And that's Mr. Terry, do you have any feedback regarding what I just mentioned um with what I'm suggesting, either the internal auditor? Or either those two positions? Would you recommend those over the grants manager?
I would, I would, I concur with you because from an internal audit standpoint and the volume of grants, I understand. So so let's be clear, I understand what the recommendation was related to the grants manager position. Um I understand what that is, but at this moment, I think you can recall that it was believed that we were not managing. The the larger money, the clawback money, and we've done that. So if we had an internal auditor, that auditor would be going around, not just in finance. But with different areas, making sure that they're doing what they need to do. And if they're getting grants, then they can coordinate with the treasurer, how to record it, make sure it's booked. Um when it's time to do reporting. And also the way I I I'm accustomed to internal auditors. If need be, they would be able to give assistance or advise council if they report directly to council. Um what needs to be done to uh make sure that grants are done. But but yeah, you're you're right on track. That if you look at all institutions, all the localities, that's pretty much what the internal audit department will do.
And and they can help with e- external partners like the Beacon, right?
Yeah, they would definitely go in.
Yeah, so and when we looked at this um last, thank you, Mr. Terry, when we looked at this a couple of years ago, the city attorney at the time. Uh Ms. Palmer and I were on the finance committee and we asked the city attorney to look at localities that were in good standing with the audits. To see what would their was their ordinances and their financial policies and procedures to find laws to address our our fi- our audit gaps. And in that research, we identified internal auditors as being in all of the localities that were in good standing for the most part. Um and so that's why that's a good model. Um and also, we did recommend councillor Pelham, correct me if I'm wrong, having that person report to city council as Mr. Terry said. So that way there was checks and balances and not feeling like he, that person reported to city manager or even the finance director, so it was an independent position. And also I'll say for the record, I did not talk to Mr. Terry beforehand. I didn't talk to nobody about this beforehand, even Dr. Makers, but she might be a little spicy with me right now. So but um so I mean, this is just my opinion about what happened right now, what we're talking about, so.
Can I get a point of information? I mean, a po- a clarity?
Now, we have councillor Denton and councillor.
What's the point of information?
What is your point of information? Who's it directed to?
Okay, I think the best approach here is to go down the.
Got some information. I was reserving my gentle quietness towards the mayor respectfully. Uh I was. Uh you had asked him a question that I missed clarification on with three positions, the auditor, the um grants. And reconciliation position. Comparing the auditor to the reconciliation, let me see.
Cash reconciliation.
Yeah, the cash reconciliation position and the auditor. Are 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 you recommending Vice Mayor those positions?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Are you recommending those two positions? You said it was like ninety thou- how much?
I I didn't, I I my personal opinion is we either fund the internal auditor. And give that person duties over grant management. Or either fund the tech reconciliation position and the assistant procurement officer because they will end up being around roughly ninety something thousand dollars.
But so but you're you're recommending two positions out of those you just named.
Yeah, because total, it'd be around ninety something thousand.
Alright, so do we have a consensus on it or no?
I didn't ask you when I just said how I felt.
Okay.
I mean, you can do it, but I didn't.
I mean, I don't have a floor now, so I was just getting point of information clarity on yours.
Councillor Denton?
I thought you were next.
You're first, then her, then myself, and then councillor Holloway.
Okay. I guess it's been so commodified here. I'm not sure I know what I'm doing here tonight, but. If anybody, if any on this council remember, I sent an email. On Monday or Friday after our, after the state came in here with their audit report. Now, I heard, and maybe I'm the only one that heard it. But I understood Ms. Selka to tell us that this report was a guideline. For us to, it was a roadmap to show us how to get to where we need to be. And they were there to help us if we needed them. So the first thing I would have liked to have done was to do basically what we're doing tonight. Is for council to come together and think about this report about our budget. And put things in perspective, what we need, where can we get it, how how do we do our budget? There were a lot of questions I had, but I never had the opportunity. To get with council and talk about that, never. And I said, we've got, we were pushed a month back because of the audit. And we've got a budget that is due July the first. So I felt we better get back on schedule and get this budget going. Or we're gonna have a city with no payroll. It was just very mixed up. And I guess I like things neat and in order. And I just felt that we needed to meet as a council and discuss these issues that have been placed before us. I don't think there are, I think one thing we will all agree. We will all raise our hand tonight and say, we know, we have got to do something to get our city straight. We know that. We've known that. But we have not been able to do it in a way that was. Effective and it wasn't getting done. Poor Mr. Terry, every time we hammered him. We wanted it to get done five years ago instead of now. But anyway. We needed, so I took what Ms. Selk said literally. She was, they were there to help us. And they were there to answer our questions and guide us if we needed. I never got the idea that they were going to tell us what to do. Never. Who to, who to get rid of, who to replace, um, what we had to do. I never got that idea. I thought I was gonna get a meeting with council so we could discuss this. But I guess our city manager tried to come in and get a compromise because the state wanted to come back again. I wasn't ready for that state then. And I wanted to get council to meet. So she said, let's compromise. Let's have council first for the first half of the meeting, state second half. Well, I got in that meeting and I was told that the state wanted to come back and talk to us. I did not want the state to come back and talk to me. I wanted to talk to you all. And then the state was gonna talk to us. Well, I got, I just want you to know, I got phone calls that I, Janice Denton was, I need, I was gonna let the city burn down because I was, I was on the four vote side to keep the state out.
Talk, Janice, talk, counselor.
I was never there. And I, I lost a very good friend because of that, because of what he was told and what was told to others. I was one of the four who didn't want the state to come in. And to be known, former Councilor Randolph and I were the ones that went to the state to get them to come initially. Am, am I right, city manager?
You, you, I'd say you're right, because I disagreed with you. You was right. You, you brought, you brought me here.
Talk, counselor.
Yeah, like you didn't agree with him.
I, 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 I wanted the state to come. It doesn't mean I agree with everything they say. And I think we can take what they have given us and put it with what we know for our city. And we can come up with a plan that will get us all where we need to be. And I just, I firmly believe that, but we can't put it off. We've got to get it done now. And I think if we tell the state we're well aware of this and we're gonna work on it, maybe they'll let us see we can work together. So I'm looking at, at these positions, I'm looking at the offer money. We can be here, of course, I guess we don't have much longer, because fifteen more minutes. But we could be here for three more hours when we have a charter for the city of Hopewell. And it states in that charter that our city manager runs the city. Not council. We do ordinances, resolutions, and that's what we do. There is a separation of power. And I think we need to give our city manager the chance to do, she's heard us all tonight, believe me, she probably wish she, she's heard more than what she wanted to hear. But she knows what she needs to do. And I think we need to rely on her and her judgment to do it. And I'm set my pre- I preached enough tonight. Thank you.
Alright, uh, Counsel Joyner?
Yes, I would just like to say that, um, I know that, you know, there's been some lighthearted discussion up here, but there's nothing lighthearted about the situation that we're in. Uh, it is unprecedented in the history of the Commonwealth of Virginia to have a locality in the financial situation that we are right now. It is, it is, seems absolutely, I'm gonna use the term ludicrous, that we would sit up here and think that all of a sudden, we have suddenly been imbued with powers uh, that we had, didn't have before, that got us into the situation that we're in. I mean, it, 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 it is just, it is so important. Now, I am not suggesting that we have to do X, Y, Z exactly that the state says. I do think that clearly, you know, they were here as, as, uh, Vice Mayor Gore said for six weeks. And certainly there are things that we are going to know historically and there may be some, um, changes that have to be made in some of the, uh, positions that are requested. But I do think that we need to use that as the major template. I think it is not wise to think that somehow we can do it ourselves. Um, I do think the state is there to help us. I think we should a- ask for their help, seek their guidance, that kind of thing, but, um, we're in a serious position. Um, uh, it is not, this is not a, a, a little time in the city. I think the city, the city's very existence, um, is, um, in terms of the way it exists now is, is, um, certainly out there on the line right now. And, um, I hope that, um, I hope that everybody's li- that is listening now will understand how important that this situation is. And, um, and I appreciate everybody's comments, I really do. Um, but, um, uh, we've got some really serious decisions to make. They need to be made soon. And, um, you know, and I rest my case.
Okay. So in going back to what I said earlier, I still think we need to focus on, you know, these positions for the audit. I mean, I'll even go and add the assistant procurement officer in addition to those three. But, you know, we do have, you know, on the ARPA spin plan, um, that's been recommended or has been requested for nine hundred thousand dollars for PMO services and additional accounting remediation services. And, you know, I think that those are appropriate because it's going to end up being a one-time thing. Because once we get, you know, our house in order, then we won't hopefully have to have, you know, all of these additional services and, um, firms in here to help us. So again, I just, I stand firm and I don't think that we should have the assistant city manager. I think that we need to focus on these positions here as recommended and outlined by the state. And, uh, you know, that's how I'll go with, going with what the, uh, auditors have recommended. Uh, let's see, Counsel Holloway and then Vice Mayor Gore.
Yeah, but my mic was on first and then, then her and then yours.
Yeah, you're after Vice Mayor Gore.
Yeah. Uh, this is just for a point of clarification. I ain't putting a motion on the floor. But early I entertained a, a motion to hire the city manager. And I think by what I looked up, it was incorrect to say that we could not do that tonight because she is not a, uh, uh, she's an employee, but she's an appointed position, not a for hire, not a for, regular for hire position, so we could have entertained the motion on the floor. Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
Let me check two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A.
Because I believe it was the same way that the chief of police, because he was appointed, was done. I was here the night that y'all hired him.
So I'm looking at the Virginia Code two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one where it says the matters that are appropriate for closed meetings authorized for certain limited purposes. A one, um, lists all discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body and evaluation of performance of all departments or schools, of public institutions, of higher education, where such evaluation will be necessary, will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. And then it goes on to talk about, uh, people who work for the school system. So that was the nature of my advice.
That was a closed session, not a.
Correct.
Point avoider.
No, no, I said.
Point avoider.
Go ahead.
Just for clarification, the issue was that you have to amend the agenda to be able to make a motion on something that's not on the agenda. This was not a topic already publicized, so you would have to amend the agenda to get permission. Mayor Parton tipped you off and said, you gotta get all seven, which he, I think he was trying to hint at, he could go for it. So, I mean, to, to be able to amend the agenda, so that's why there was a need to push it further.
No, 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 I said I wasn't gonna make the motion. I just wanted the clarification.
To your question, it's a proper motion to request that we appoint a city manager if it were on the agenda.
Correct. Okay, that's what, yeah, I was just making sure that clarifications. I, I wasn't planning on making a motion tonight, but I did plan on making it next week, so I wanted to get that clarification.
To a, to a point eight?
No, to a point.
You have to do it publicly.
Right, but I, but I thought the question from council was that. That's to be discussed in closed sessions. That was the nature of my advice.
Yes. I, I knew there was disconnect.
Yes, when he was asking what you were saying.
Thank you for clarification, thanks.
She answered you correctly, but I think she understood your question to be different.
Right, right, right. Then there was something, okay, so are we looking for this consensus with the, wh- wh- how we, how we direct them when it comes to, um, cause it seems like there's different thought processes. I'm still in the position of hiring the auditor. And I would like to ask, um, Mr. Terry, if that auditor would be similar to that grant person position that the state recommended. Would, would hiring a auditor do that same job or s- serve the same purpose as what the state recommended? Would that be like a two-on-one deal or wouldn't it?
I will answer that in the, in the terms of yes, if, if that position, like the grants manager, if that position is gonna be within finance, you would have an auditor that could function and do audit functions, but also be responsible for grants and grants management and grant review. If you are speaking of the internal, internal auditor in the format of best practice, then that internal auditor would report directly to council for independence and would not be, uh, assigned the, the role of working on grants or doing the, the function of grants management.
Okay, so what, what would be your recommendation in regards to a hire?
Where we are right today, we need all hands, all boots on deck, period. So the more help we can get into departments to, to do things and to also be looking at internal controls, then I would say, yeah, the internal auditor with the assignment to do grants management.
With internal auditor with the assignment.
Yeah, but within, but within finance and maybe as we get out of that, then the next phase would be what you would call independent external auditor that reports directly to council.
I'd like to know if we have like a consensus with thought of that.
So why don't we do this? We've got all these positions, let's go through them, just one item, one by one, and just raise our hands if we're in favor of those.
Okay.
I saw the floor after, after Counsel Holloway, but you can do that.
So, so yeah, I agree with doing what, uh, the mayor said. It was another thing, some, that something, it was that. What was the other, Counsel Joyner s- uh, spoke to, um, no, 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 might have been the mayor. Oh, the assistant city manager. And yeah, also include this, so the assistant city manager will be on that check-off list you asked about.
So we're just gonna go for all the ones that we've talked about tonight. We're just gonna raise hands for yay. Just keep your hands down if you're not in favor of it.
Okay. Year, uh, year the floor to, uh, Counsel, uh, I mean, excuse me, sorry, Vice Mayor.
We're just getting consensus on the jobs, but we're gonna let everyone.
I'll let her work out the budget.
Yes.
Yeah, so I agree with some of the comments Counsel Denton made earlier about like the auditors and where we are now and all these positions and stuff. Quite frankly, it's been like, this has been shoved down our throats. If people wanna be honest, we've been bullied
Yes.
into being forced to meet, um, even when the majority of us have said that we don't feel comfortable in doing so. Um, even when we haven't had time to read their reports that they're publicly talking about to council. Um, and so I don't want public to sit here and think that some of us are dragging our feet or don't care about the city's finances. I think it says a lot when Counsel Denton, forgive me, uh, we historically have not seen eye to eye when it comes to the budget and finances. But if we're sitting here in lockstep together to sit here and say something is wrong, that speaks volumes. And so I agree with what she said about the state. I agree with what she said about the process.
Yes.
And so, um, I think that people need to take heed to that. Um, and then also Counsel Randolph, everybody knows, it was like my arch nemesis on council for t- four years and we agreed on what's happening, right? So that also says a lot. So with that being said, just to be clear, we are not, even though this is unprecedented in the sense we haven't had audits caught up. What's not unprecedented is we are not in a situation as Petersburg was when the auditors, when the state had to take over their finance department. That was way worse than where we are now. We are not in the unprecedented situation, what they did with Bristol. So yes, our audits are not caught up, but we say unprecedented, we need to give people proper context that we are in no way, shape, or form in the condition in which the state had to pretty much commandeer their finance departments and take over their services. And the Secretary of Ca- uh, Finance clarified that in public when he sat here on the thirtieth and clarified that to, uh, for the newspapers as well. Um, I also would say, um, it says a lot that, you know, no disrespect, because I'm kinda getting tired of feeling like people are trying to point us out to not want to do something, um, when those who are trying to shove this down our throats include people who are also elected for a number of years who have not done anything in Hopewell.
Right.
So let's be clear. Our delegate has been our delegate. There's been no assistance for Hopewell when it comes to adjusting our finances. No requests in general assembly to get any funding until now, and now we are forced to try to work with what's being suggested that we do. So let's also be clear on that part. Um, and also the APA, the state and others are on record for saying that they did not want to come into Hopewell. So you have to forgive us who are cautious about what is happening, um, in regards to this attempted takeover, um, and bad-mouthing of council members, especially when the paper is being quoted as saying, uh, from our delegate, uh, uh, in particular, of she's disappointed in council members. For our, our leadership, our lack of wanting to take their support when it's really not support, you're being forced to try to do something you don't feel comfortable with. Um, we've talked about some members of council expressing the fact they feel like they have been strong-armed and, and, and don't feel comfortable with some of the conversations that have been had with them on one-on-one. And so if we're supposed to be teammates in this fight to try to address the city, if a member of your council, your peer says to you, I do not feel comfortable, I feel as if I'm being treated this way, you should take heed. And so just wanna put that on the record as well, because I do not have, like how this is going and it's been a repetitive thing. And truth be told, some of this stuff that's been here, that's why I was kinda get a little, um, feisty with city manager, is people trying to slowly s- put stuff into our budget that we explicitly said that we did not want to have done. And the PMO comment, we specifically voted to not do that with ARPA funds. We took it out of the motion. So it shouldn't be back in here again. We did not ask for it to be back in here. So let's just be clear on this. There's a few members of the council dictating some of this stuff. And so you see frustration is because we're trying to be team members here and it is not going that way when the majority is saying that they have concerns and it keeps falling and making it seem as if we're just not trying to do anything or we're just blindly, just, you know, wanna twiddle our thumbs and make excuses. That's not the case. Especially when we sit here and say, we had prior examples, but we've been asking for, for years with no support. And the state will sit here on the desk and say they can't give us money, but spent three hundred thousand dollars to give us a plan that we already knew this stuff. They took all prior audits and put it into one document for three hundred thousand dollars. Is that, is that not fraud, waste, and abuse if you ever saw it? If you wanna talk about us, come on now. So let's just be clear about this. Um, and we can go through the consensus of the positions, but I also, I'm kinda had enough of this little game that people are playing. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to be cool about it, but next comment may not be so nice, because I've about had enough.
Ditto.
We can go through the list, Dr. Maker, of the positions, please, one by one. We can go through the list, Dr. Manker, of the positions, please, one by one.
Assistant city manager.
Yeah, hold on, ca- yeah, councillor Pelham starts to talk.
And well, I'll say first, traditionally councillor Gore and I have agreed with a lot of things about finances in the past. However, I I just think a lot of times, uh, everybody's taking this stuff so personal about the state coming down. The state came down, but they hired a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar firm. That told us what all the other auditors in the last seven years have told us, that we have no internal controls. Uh, what's the other thing? No cash, cash reconciliations. So, they they paid that money for the citizens of Hopewell to give us back what we already knew for seven years. And I I I don't, I don't, I don't think it's a slap in the face, I think that that their intention was to help us actually. People, sometime other delegates and other politicians do make it political, and we do too. But the thing is, we gotta do what's the better meant for the city and the citizens. And because I've recommended it for seven years and I wasn't listened to, I'm not gonna take offense that somebody has come back seven years later and said, this is what we should do. Finance cannot, I don't know how you cannot hire the PMO people when finance is shown that they can't do their day to day jobs and do the audit job. What are we gonna do? Who who who's gonna do the, who's gonna do the audits? That's why we keep getting behind more and more, because we keep putting it off. So, I mean, you gotta have the PMO, the people that we're supposed to hire extra, correct?
No, point of order, the PMO does not give positions, it doesn't give people, and that's the issue that we're trying to say. Out of our to see manager, the PMOs have somebody oversee the work, but not to hire people to do the work. And that's what we keep trying to say.
But PMO are super, are they gonna bring out people?
Is a manager.
It's just a manager, just to oversee a project.
Costs three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No, so, so the PMO group is a set of individuals that will come and oversee the process. So, the second item, when we s- kind of then jumped over into the ARPA conversation, but I guess we need.
Process, see our people work or see other people work? Additional people hired.
That we, that we have to secure. So, the second line says accounting remediation services.
Yes, nine hundred.
That's, those are the people that we gotta hire to do the work, this this set of people to do the work.
Which is what we.
So, this would be the top person would be a person like Bob Ra- Ra Bob or whoever.
So, I would, I would love to get consensus tonight to move forward with the accounting re- remediation services. So, we can get a accounting firm in here to start the work. If we don't do anything else tonight, let's do that.
But with the PMO team is gonna.
Yes, exactly.
So, just for clarification, Dr. Manker, Dr. Manker, councillor Pelham has the floor. And just for clarification, the PMO is to have a a top heavy person watch over a project to get people that we still have to fund to do the position, whereas their finance remedi- remediation that you're talking about allows us to get people on the ground to do the work that we're asking to get done, is that councillor Pelham's out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, who's gonna hire these people? I I don't want. Anyway, my 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 point is, I don't care who's giving the advice, the the fact is the person, the company, a well-class company, high-dollar company that has a great reputation. Has given us a roadmap to be successful. Leave the state out of it. They made that recommendation for the benefit of our citizen, our city.
Yeah.
Not the state. A M E, A N M, made those recommendations.
But the state.
We have a roadmap.
But the state.
And presented it and trashed us, so let's be clear.
So, that's politics, people talk about us all the time.
Expect for us to sit here and play ball, me too, you're trying to say, you want people to take their Boston gloves off, but be respectful back. They get respect when you give respect.
You don't have to, all I'm saying, Vice Mayor, is this, don't take it personal. People gonna talk about you to Jesus come, and he ended, I hope he comes soon, I swear. Concentrate on the company that gave us a roadmap to heal our city. That's what we need to concentrate on. That company says, this is your roadmap, this is some thing you can do. And I can see tweaking it and 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 not doing maybe every exact thing, but I I I I I just don't see how we can not go take a detour off the roadmap that was that costs three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and not, cause it caused that much, because I, it it's a good plan.
But that's what we said, and we're supporting you. I'm just asking you a question, councillor Pelham, if you don't mind, since you have the floor, just a point of clarification. I don't think that those of us who have said some disagrees with your points, we said the detour is the internal auditor to support what you asked for.
Yeah.
We also said to PMO to adjust that to get people on the ground, which is what you're asking for. So, just to be clear, we're not denying what they said, we're saying that there's other options to do exactly what you're saying. So, just make sure, like, the internal auditor matches what you're saying, having Ra Bob or whoever come in to get people on the ground matches what you're saying.
Okay, yeah, we we got, we gotta do, take the roadmap and 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 get something done. Cause what we've tried to do has failed totally, and we don't have the people that know how to totally do what we need to have done. We don't have the staff to do that. They can't simultaneously do audit work and the day to day work, it's obvious.
Agreed.
And when the the PMO people come and see that, even if they find our people are not capable of doing it. Somebody has to be strong enough to say, honey, you gotta find another job. If you can't convert your mind thinking to munis or whatever the communist computer system is. Somebody gotta go. I mean, we we can't be a nice guy all the time. Thank you.
Okay, so let's, before this meeting ends, let's go through the position requests.
Can I like the a motion to extend the meeting?
Okay, fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes.
And I have my lights on.
Okay, is there any discussion on the time limit extension? Councillor Holloway, your light is on, is it, do you wanna discuss the extension?
Oh, I was still holding my light, I'm, I don't wanna discuss.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Second motion.
Uh, Vice Mayor Gore.
I'm sorry, what, is it my, it's roll call? Councillor Joyner?
Yes.
Councillor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councillor Denton?
Yes.
Councillor Pelham?
Yes.
Councillor Holloway?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, now, I have councillor Joyner, Holloway, and then Denton to speak. But before we do that, can we go through and run through the consensus before we run out of time?
My my light, I was watching, was on before Joyner's.
No, it wasn't, Dominic. I know it wasn't.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, raise your hand if you would like the assistant city manager position included in the budget. All right, one, two.
You still do what?
The assistant city manager position in the budget. All right, all right, four hands. The next one is the assistant procurement officer. All right, raise your hands if you would like that one.
An app clarification.
Right.
I I support this if it's with the other thing, if we don't do the in- internal audit, so I can't ask her like this.
That's why, I mean, we're just, we're going through the list. I mean, I'm supporting the internal audit if that's, you know, helpful to you with you, with the count of of.
I don't think you understand my question, but I'll just go with it, we'll see how it pans out.
Okay, so.
Put me down for that, too, miss.
I'm down for that.
So, the assistant procurement officer. I say one, two, three, four, five hands, okay.
Okay.
Accounting tech reconciliation support. All right, I say one, two, three, four.
Well, what is this? Hold on, which one we on? Accounting, oh, the reconciliation? Absolutely.
Okay.
Man, too fat.
Grants manager officer slash internal auditor. One, two, three.
That's everybody.
Four, five.
That's three.
No, it's one, two, three, four, five, six. It's six.
It wasn't that, it was an internal auditor with grant manager duties.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I mean, six want a half a dozen the other.
Okay, so, let's rewrite it on the paper, hold on. So, we asked for, we on the grants manager, right? Are we on that one?
Yeah, mine's an internal auditor.
So, man is if it's an internal audit auditor with grants manager.
Yeah, so just do two, two different passes, do grant manager first and then do the other one second.
Okay.
No, we did.
All right, first one is for a grants manager officer by itself. Let's see, one, two, three, okay, that one does not make it. Internal auditor with grant manager responsibilities.
Oh, that, oh, sorry, okay.
So, so that's one, two.
Everybody's.
Yeah, everybody, okay. Next one, assistant finance director, budget.
Assistant director's budget?
Yes.
But the budget?
Yeah, assistant finance director for the budget. All right, that's four.
Hold on, one one clarification for you, you recommended that, right? When I asked, you did not recommend it. You do not recommend that?
The auditors recommended.
No, I'm saying, so do you recommend that position?
He's shaking his head no.
No, yes. It's it's a no for me.
Okay, so that one does not have four people. All right, deputy fire chief.
I'm impartial.
I talked to the fire chief as well, and I don't remember him. Did he say yes on that one? Did he say yes on that one?
She's raising her hand, cause doctor Manker wants some.
She's looking sad, just support her, just support her.
No, but what I'm asking is, when I talk to the.
It said no, three votes.
It's three no's, okay.
The EMS captain.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five.
The, he was in front of us and asked us to give him that.
Okay.
So, so we six.
He asked for that EMS captain?
He came in.
Oh, wait, that was when I said, why do you need to have somebody?
Yes, six, so six for that one.
Yeah, I remember now.
Six for the EMS captain, okay.
Yeah, I remember that one.
I'll make you seven.
Okay.
All right, so now, let's just make sure that we got them all. We said EMS captain. We said no to the assistant fire, sorry, no to the deputy fire chief, no to the assistant finance director for the budget. We said yes to the internal auditor with grant manager responsibilities or duties. Um, grants manager, no. Accounting tech reconciliation support, yes. Assistant procurement officer, yes. And assistant city manager, yes.
So, the other ones, you were just gonna ignore, right? Cause they weren't talking points for tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Now, Dr. Manker, on to ARPA, or excuse me, I'm sorry, we said.
ARPA is the last item.
Well, hold on, I I, we said, uh, councillor Pelham went, councillor Joyner can uh talk, Holloway, and then Denton. Councillor Holloway?
Uh, councillor Denton asked me if I could use my time for her to make a motion.
Yeah, I, he said I could go before him.
Okay.
I I would like to make a motion. That we go ahead right now and get an accounting remediation service for the city.
Oh, yes.
To get us started.
I second it.
On this road.
Okay.
Concur.
So, you're asked.
That is the five hundred and fifty thousand of ARPA money.
Okay.
We can get them in here quicker the better.
Yesterday.
So, can I ask for a friendly amendment to include the PMAs, PMO services as well?
No, we 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 against the PMO.
Separate right now.
Okay.
Point of information, councillor Denton, the mayor allows me.
Yeah.
This is to get the people on the ground to actually start the process. Yeah, it's our to makers, but we, okay, I'm good then.
So, let let me just clarify, I did have a conversation with, um, um, Alvarez and Marshall on Monday. And and several questions I asked, uh, so initially I came with just the PMO services. But in that clarification, it was said that you still needed a group of, a team of people and in in addition to what council has already supplied to us. And so, with that information, that is why you see it broken out. Now, in that conversation, it led to, we can secure those short-term additional people ourselves through through agencies, or we can hire a firm that has accounting experience. And 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 use those individuals as your remediation team. The PMO services is to come in, oversee the project. They they will not be hiring the re- remediation team, they are to develop processes, procedures. Um, leave us with a template, ensure that the steps that we are taking that Alvarez has given us is followed. That is per the conversation I had on Monday, and that's why you see these two services broken out. That's not to say we don't need them, is to say to get started.
Right now.
It is, these are two separate ideals, they work together to get the job done. But the boots on the ground is the accounting re- remediation services.
Well, would would it be better to include both of those?
No.
Or keep it broken out?
Broken out.
She wants it together.
I mean, I wanna get somebody in here right now, yeah, I'm not gonna support it. Boots on the ground, let's get going.
Yeah, I'm not in support of the PMO. I I'm in support of what she said, but not adding that PMO to it.
All right, Dr. Manker, can you answer councillor Joy- um, Denton's question? Councillor Joyner has the light next, once you answer.
Listen, the PMO services is what was requested in the uh uh recommenda- recommended in the, um, by the auditor, auditors' report. I'm not against the PMO services, I think it's helpful, it's useful, we're gonna get those procedures written down. And we're going to get the, um, a whole host of things from the PMO services. We do not have the staff to ensure that the whole full scope is going to, is going to be executed. Uh, we may get people to end here and and clean it all up and get it all cleaned up really fast, but we have to be left with a a documentation. However, at the end of the day, it is still the council's choice of the decision that they would like to take.
Okay, you, you skipped me.
Still has the floor.
Can I have the floor?
Yep, and then you're next.
All right.
All right.
Oh, sorry.
I would right now just like to go with the accounting remediation service. That way, we can get people in here, and then they can get, then we can go ahead at a little bit later and do the PMO.
Well, the the accounting firm will have their own project manager that's gonna oversee the actual uh uh accounting, the reconcili- the reconciliations. But they will not be providing us with step-by-step work processes. That, that's not something the remediation services will provide.
Are we, are they one in the same, would they be one in the same group, or are they two different entirely?
They could be two different people, it's very rarely you're gonna be able to find a firm to do both. Normally, a PMO is a auditing firm.
Okay.
Uh, accounting remediator services that are a group of accountants.
Then I'll take your friendly amendment.
Okay.
I I I mean.
I don't second that one.
If you're saying, I'm I'm fine understanding you correctly, well, go ahead and vote to go with the accounting remediation services and the PMO. Um, so we can at least get us, get some in here right away, some maybe a little bit, they'll come a little later, I don't know.
Yeah, the PMO services will ha- will have to be a RFP, an accounting remediation services. We can actually, um, piggyback on other localities who are actually, uh, have accounting services. And I think we can get the them in sooner than later.
Okay.
Point of information, I thought we had a, a, a I'm trying to limit what I say, cause I, I know it was a closed session item, but I don't think what I'm saying is, is, uh, what's called. I thought that we had already had a suggest- suggestion for a PMO in closed session presented to us from Doctor Manker, am I incorrect about saying?
So I suggested that the PM, that the suggested item from Alvarez was to use internal people on the PMO in addition to the, those that we have, have.
Right, so we can use our, so we can use our Finance Director for the PMO, as the state suggested.
It says internal people to be on it, not, you, you can use a PMO to oversee the whole project, meaning that the Finance Director can be a part of the team, but the PMO will provide processes, documentation. They are, they're gonna go in and, and give us documentation that we can use going for, forward on how to do the jobs that need to be done.
Again, my question still stands to say, the, the, the state recommended that it can be an internal person, correct?
It recommended that, that, that two internal people be included on the PMO team.
So then my question was, the Finance Director and whomever else could be their PMO?
No, that, you, you're mixing up, PMO is a, it's just a, a, a structure, a body.
Yeah, the manager.
Okay.
Okay, so, taken from what you said, you withdraw your second, correct?
I withdraw the second to have the, the, add the PMO edit, absolutely.
Council Palom has seconded the motion. All right, is there any other discussion? Uh, Vice Mayor Gore.
We don't have clear guidance of what the PMO was supposed to look like, besides the points that, uh, Council Holloway was talking about, and the structure that was recommended by the state, it could be a consultant to do the same thing. You don't have to hire a whole firm for six hundred thousand dollars, and that's the point that we're trying to get people to see, is that you're gonna hire a firm to oversee stuff, but then have to still turn around and hire the people to execute. That is a lot of money, whereas you can hire a consultant to, or, or two consultants to do this. Or either heck, if we voted to do the internal auditor, have the internal auditor and a consultant work on this as overseeing it. And then with the staff that we're hiring through the remediation firm, to be boots on the ground to do the work.
Can a PMO be a consultant?
Yeah, that's, yes.
And that's what the state was recommending.
Can be a consultant.
My, my point is.
Be an agency or a consultant.
Right, so.
So that's, so just, so what I, that's why I oppose to allocating six hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars for a PMO. Where you can get someone for one or two people for far less, if you keep looking at what's in here, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars for a PMO. Where we have to so spend five hundred thousand for a remediation firm, and that's why I keep trying to say, go with the remediation firm, let's figure out what we're gonna do for a PMO, firm, individual consultant or whatever, and then come back and talk about that. Um, cause it does not make sense to spend over a million dollars for, for a firm. They're not doing the work.
Hold on, everybody.
Was recommended three fifty, but those are just recommended amounts.
Right, right, right.
Get a consultant chief or you.
Yeah, so, and, right.
I, I would leave that up to her to do.
But, but what are we getting, RFP?
For the RFP, we have to, yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Will you put up to?
No, 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 what I'm saying, what am I, what I'm saying is, what is the RFP going to be drift- drafted as? We could do it for a person, a consultant, a firm, we haven't decided that PMO blanket statement, and that's why I keep trying to get you guys to see what are we directing her to look at? No one has defined that besides what say, well, the state's recommendation, state's recommendation, the state wants us to hire a certain group. So, I mean. And so, let's just be clear, so I'm fine with the remediation firm to get the, get that rolling, and for us to have a discussion about PMO and what that looks like, and what we're asking for her to research. Um, before we sit here and just throw on a PMO.
Give us what you find, though.
Yes, so can we subtract?
So I still have the floor. So then my recommendation is, if whoever made the motion, Council Denton, if you're fine with amending your motion to say to move forward with the remediation services and to direct the city manager to come back at a work session two weeks from now to give us options for a PMO for us to consider, that would make sense to me.
I think we understand what a PMO is, and I, I have a great deal of trust and confidence in Doctor Manker, and I, I, I wanna keep my motion as is. We need to show the state, we need to show people that we are moving forward, and this is the way we can do it. And we've got it budgeted, so let's, let's don't, let's go for it.
It's not budgeted, it's an ARPA funds, right now the suggestion. So if you don't have majority that's gonna pay for it, you're not gonna still get it funded. Um, so that's just.
We can put on, the vote on the floor, I don't support.
But, um, a motion, uh, the agenda meeting ends now, it's nine forty-five.
Now, we, we've had precedents where the city attorney says that we can finish our business item.
We can motion to adjourn.
There's a motion, uh, there's an active motion on the floor, the motion can be voted on if there's a call for the vote.
All right.
Call for the vote.
All right. Roll call, please.
To do the PMO and the, um.
That's an absolute no, and we don't even know what's.
Council Joyner?
Yes.
Council Harris? Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
No.
Council Denton?
Yes.
Council Pelham?
Yes.
Council Holloway?
No.
Motion passes four to three.
So just to be clear, city attorney, since we're still conducting this business, that was a point that was raised. The motion passed for us to move forward, but there's no money allocated to do this.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, can't execute anything till we allocate funds.
The funds.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, well, allocate funds, they're gonna be no problem.
Say more people vote yes.
Yeah.
But it ain't now, that's my point.
Bring back to us the consultant and all.